To order, would you please, as a courtesy, turn down your chair or turn off your cell phones? And we will be conducting our meeting by Robert's Rules of Order. If you have a copy here, if anyone has a question about that later. We're supposed to have some people from the youth leadership class here. They may not be here, but when they get here, they're welcome. I'd like, I think there's three or four of them. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, last mayor Watts.
Here.
Councilwoman McEnapple.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott. Councilwoman Ebel.
Here.
Councilwoman Petty.
Here.
Councilwoman Reese.
Here.
City Attorney Bass.
Here.
Okay, we'll have the consideration of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the ones that were sent to you, the copies? Are there any additions or corrections to those meeting minutes?
I only had one, and it might be correct. It was a quick question on the, it was the January 3rd. Well, they're both dated the same. But it was the, it was the part that was used.
Regular or special calls?
It's a special call. It was the part that was used. I'm trying to find it here. I just want to make sure that part was used for the water plant. What was the name of that, that part that we had ordered for the water plant?
Oh, it's the actuator on the filter agitator valve. I've got a report on that now.
Okay, I think that was just the part name was all I had, was to make sure it was the correct part name. Was that a different part?
Oh, that was the water lighter module.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, because in Robert's, just to kind of keep it, we have to, we have to say whoever's speaking so everybody will know.
So is that Ms. Mofield?
Yes, okay. Were there any other?
So just, yeah, just to be correct about it, request to ask Ms. Mofield if that correct part was mentioned right.
Councilwoman Petty, did you have a question?
I've got a question in that we have meeting, council minutes and everything from the Thursday, January 3rd, special call meeting. And we were told at the special call meeting on January 22nd that the meeting on January 3rd was not legal. So how can we put in minutes for an illegal meetings that essentially didn't occur?
It wasn't that the meeting wasn't, it was some of the situations that happened with the meeting got out of, out of the realm or the scope of what we were supposed to.
Well, you told me personally that the reason we were having a special call meeting on January 22nd was because this meeting was not legal and did not essentially didn't exist.
The motion that was made that night, the special call meeting was just for the, for the purpose of, tell me again, what did, what was our purpose that night? It was called just for the?
That was the one for issues with regard to the Carthage wastewater treatment plant.
Right, right, okay. It was issues with regard to wastewater plant. But when you call a special call meeting, just so everyone knows, it's specifically whatever is written for that meeting. So if we weren't, if we didn't put a public notice out that we weren't going to vote on anything, we couldn't make a motion, we couldn't vote that night because that was not within the scope of what was publicly notified to people. So they, we have to let people know if there's going to be a vote on something so they can come and have a statement in that, if that's the case. That's according to?
Point of inquiry. On that note, so you're basically, are you saying that all the votes that were made at that meeting are null and void?
Yes, everything that was done beyond the scope of just discussion of that issue that we publicized is null and void, yes. And so that's why we had to have a second call meeting. So if that wanted, if you wanted to bring that up again, we put in the notice that time there might possibly be a vote.
And point of inquiry, have we, have we corrected all that since that January 26th? It's all been corrected, okay?
That's been corrected. That's why we had that second special call meeting, yes.
I was gonna ask permission for Ms. Mofield to, just if she could clarify.
She, let's wait till, because I think she has a report she'll be giving.
Okay, if I, well, because it has to do with this, can I, can I, may I ask Ms. Mofield?
Certainly, but please, please ask to be recognized, because we are going by Robert's.
Gotcha. May I be recognized to ask Ms. Mofield a question?
And we will have to suspend rules to let her speak at this point, so.
I don't, I don't believe so, because it's a question about, it's, basically it's to approve meeting minutes, and I need to create a correction from the sewer plant. And it might be, I don't know if this falls under sewer plant or water plant, but the seal failure cable. I'm making sure that this is a correct part being listed. That's all I'm asking, and if I can just get clarification, that's the only one I have as far as all the meeting minutes.
Ms. Mofield, would you clarify that, please?
Yes, ma'am, you said a seal.
It says a seal failure cable has been replaced.
That's the sewer.
That'd be sewer plant. So that one, I apologize, it's not you.
That has been replaced.
And that's the correct part name, name for that?
And that's our supervisor, Stephen Key.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I'm sorry, Councilwoman Petty, did I clarify that okay for you? We kind of jumped around here for the special call meeting. That needs to be clarified for everyone, because a special call meeting from those of you out there, you have to specifically state what the meeting is for in the public notice. And anything beyond that is out of the scope of that meeting and is null and void. So that happened inadvertently in a meeting, so we had to redo that meeting to open it up to the public again and stayed in there. There might possibly be a vote, so anyone who wanted to come from the public to, to speak to that possibility could be there. So that's why we were trying to do these all by our Robert's Rules and by all the various laws that cover this kind of thing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
All right. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. All approved? Well, should we do it, should we do it right?
Roll call, that's up to you. If you want to, we can.
Let's not worry about it on that one, we'll do it on the next one. All right, consideration of bills over $2,000. Any questions about these?
Uh, can I be recognized? I would like to do a line item voting on this, if that'd be possible. And I do have questions on line items on the bills to be approved.
Is everyone okay with that? Line item, okay.
Let me get to him, I apologize.
Let's let our recorder, Michael Ray, read these, please.
First one is quill consultants, $2,200 for the tourism enhancement grant, and then $3,500 for the facade improvement project. Second one is dire heating and cooling for $3,900 for a new HVAC unit for the spot. And the last one is public entity partners, $7,239.05 for the third installment of our buildings and property insurance. And they're billed quarterly, so there'll be one more. The second one is $11,092.04 for the third installment for our liability insurance. And the last one is $13,886.44 for the third installment of our workers' comp insurance.
Um, may I be recognized? On the first, on the first, I just wanted to make a statement on the first two. I just wanted to make sure that whenever we're, whenever we're looking at grants, we do look at these consulting fees that we, that, they're, they're pretty large. Make sure that when we're looking at these, these are several thousand dollars, and we put that into consideration. It's just, I just wanted to make that kind of public statement if that was appropriate. And then if we can vote on, like I said, if we can vote on these line item by line item, I'll motion, because these are previously done, I'll motion to approve lineup book. Apologize.
I'm sorry, to approve all? Yes, sir.
May I ask, just a brief one or two sentence statement. What was the tourism enhancement grant and the facade grant? What are we authorizing?
This is just to pay the?
Yeah, just for the, I actually.
What was done, what done with the tourism enhancement grant?
I have the invoice here, if you want to, there's a breakdown there if you want to look at it.
The walking park?
Uh, yes.
That, that has to do with the walking park, I believe.
Which Ms. Cufford can answer to that if anybody has questions.
And I assume the facade grant is paying, where we did the last facade grant, paying off the consulting fees for that?
Yes.
I believe so. We're still working on the facade. I'm not sure if this is the same facade, there's been several facades around, so.
And there is one new addition, because Councilman Ebel wanted me to send these out with the packet, but there's one addition that came in for Warren and Associates for $2,400 for the amphitheater. And it is here, if anybody wants to look at it.
These are, whether or not we go forward with any of this, there's still some of these that we have to pay.
Yeah, this is prior work that has already been.
What was the number on that Warren Associates? Oh, pardon, pardon.
Councilman Ebel.
What was the number on that Warren Associates?
$2,400.
Thank you.
No, I don't understand.
Any other questions?
I don't really understand, we were getting charged $800 for an outside services attached, a invoice attached, mechanical and electrical. Oh, that was for design. Okay, I thought that would be included in design, normally it is, or that's my understanding, but that's fine. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Michael.
Are there any other questions about these charges?
I'll make a motion to approve quill consultants.
So you're, I'm sorry, you're doing this line by line, then?
Yes, line by line on quill consultants.
Do I hear a second to that, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All opposed.
Well, all opposed, I didn't hear any of it, okay.
Point of inquiry, or not, I guess it may be a statement. I've got a, as far as the HVAC unit for the spot, I've got a conflict of interest, so I've got to abstain from that vote. My son goes up to the spot, so I think that would be a conflict of interest to do that, so I'm just stating that.
It's not for the spot, it's for city biz building. It happens to be at the spot.
It just on that end of the building.
That wouldn't be a conflict of interest, I mean.
I wouldn't think so, but that's his call.
I think what they're trying to say, the city owns the building, and they're renting from the building, or using the building.
Okay, so this, the spot, the spot rents from the building, okay.
Yeah, it's part of the whole entire building.
So it's a city-owned building.
I might just abstain, just because I was, I want to clear, I just want to make sure I don't have a conflict of interest on it, so.
Okay, okay. Any other questions about that particular line item? Okay.
Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second to that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Do you second? Which one, Jack?
And I'm just abstaining on that.
Okay, the dire heating and cooling? Do I hear a motion for that one?
That was.
That was, I'm so sorry. Okay, public entity partners. The $7,239.05.
Motion to approve.
I just had a point, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
She's got the floor, I apologize, Tom.
I have a motion to approve that's the insurance for the city.
Second, yes.
So it'd be open for discussion now, per Robert's order?
Should it be before, shouldn't it?
After the second, yes, yes. Just, is this for the insurance on these? This is for insurance, okay. And I just had a point of inquiry on that, is, do, why don't we not work insurance into the budget? This is typically done this way, and again, I'm, you know, it's my third month.
It is, it's figured in the overall operating of the, of the city.
Okay, gotcha.
Because these are for each department, so it's figured into the operation and overall budget.
Okay.
We approve the budget, but then we have to approve the cutting of the checks.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, okay. So it's already run through the budget then?
Yeah, anything, any check cut over $2,000, so it's come before you guys.
Okay, very good.
Any other discussion on that?
Are you approving all three?
Yes, well, however that would be. Motion to approve all three?
Okay. Do I hear a second to approve all three?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. So?
And the last one is Mr. Warren's, $2,400 for the amphitheater. That came in after I'd already sent this out.
Okay, then we have this one other item to Mr. Warren's for engineering work, what is this? Did everybody see this breakdown? Okay. For $2,400, do I hear a motion to accept this?
Motion.
I'm sorry, was that?
Motion to accept.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that motion? Second, thank you. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, go ahead.
Is this, is this specifically to design, or may I ask Mr. Warren a question on it, since we're approving a budget for?
Yes, but we have to get his, yes. Who do you want to address, Mr. Warren?
I'd like to address Mr. Warren.
Okay, this is Mr. Warren, the engineer for that project.
Mr. Warren, is this specifically designed for this specific area, on this amphitheater? Okay, but, and when it was designed, was it, was the Army Corps of Engineers, was the zoning consulted, was the, the city planning developed? Was every, who all was consulted when you specifically designed it for this specific area?
When that was, that location was selected, that was part of the, the original part, the plan set up to plan. And I believe that was all presumed to the city council. I can't remember if it went specifically to the planning commissioner at that time.
We could not take these specific designs and move it to another area, is what, is, would that be correct?
That kind of depends upon the area. I mean, it might fit in another area, but that design was for that specific project.
May I ask, Mr. Warren, is, if we had, in your, I know this is just an opinion, but in your opinion, if we had a similar site that was more favorable to the citizens of this town, you think it would be relatively close to what we needed?
That's a good possibility. You just have to be.
I know there'd be modifications.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, just a question, okay?
Be relative to some.
That brings up a question. The first, I think the lowest estimate was $100,000 over our budget, would it still be around that same amount, do you think?
Well, that was discussed at one of the previous meetings. If we choose the same building, it may be. If we look at possibly making some changes, some value engineering type options, it could be less.
Is there any other place being looked at?
Councilman Reese, you have four, thank you, yes.
Is there any other, a specific place that's been looked at, or to move it to?
I'm not aware of anything. This happened before I came along, so I don't know.
I guess at the all-in location.
I think when we get, and we're basically considering right now the approval of this, of this line item. I think that's for a different time, but I think there are some alternatives that would be much better for the citizens, and possibly even we can do it in cheaper.
And this actually is an item that will come up later in your, in OBS.
Okay, I didn't know there was anything else being discussed.
Yes, it's an OBS business, so we, okay. As far as that, Mr. Warren's line item, any other discussion about that? Okay. All in favor, then? Accept those. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so we're good. Do pay that. Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're gonna move on to the various reports. The first is my mayor's report, and a couple of things I want to sort of brag on my employees, my supervisors. We've been having weekly supervisor meetings, and in those meetings, they've come up with new job descriptions for each employee. They've come up with evaluations for each employee, and this is something we've never had in the files here before, so we're really pleased that we now have this. In case we have to hire someone new, we now have a description of what we're hiring. Two of us, three of us actually went to the recent utility training, Councilman Reese, Councilman Ebel, and myself. And Councilman Petty, I believe, went to the elected officers training. So we've now had quite a few people who have gone to these trainings. I believe Councilman McEnapple is considering going, so if we all end up going, this will be the first time in the history, I think, of this whole council that everyone's had that specific training, which I think is a great thing for, for our city. Yes, sir. Councilman?
It was my understanding, and this was based on, you're in my conversation, that these were all required.
Well, the utility is going to be required, yes.
And not the, not the other?
Well, we, it will eventually be required, so we're kind of, we're getting.
Eventually, but you told me it was required now.
No, the utilities is required.
No.
Well, I thought you said you enjoyed it, so.
I did.
Okay.
But I won't, like, told, you know, campaign owner, I want some transparency, and when you tell me one thing and that's not the case, I think that there needs to be.
Well, I think, Councilman Petty, maybe we had misunderstanding communication, because no, it's not required, the utility will be required.
It's pretty clear, if I ask you if it's required and you say yes, that's pretty clear.
Is there a point to this, Councilman?
Yes, I want to, I think we need to be addressing things in appropriate manners.
Okay.
And be totally true.
Okay, if I misinformed any of you, this is not totally required. It would be a good thing, it would be wonderful if all of us had this training, because it's never been done in the city. And it would be a really nice thing for all of us to understand how elected officials are really supposed to function in a small town. So I'm not going to require it, no, but I think it's an excellent thing that you went, and I believe you said you had a really good experience.
It is an excellent course, and I recommend everybody go. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. May I make a statement?
Sure.
It was, it's on my understanding as well that the utility training is required by the state. There's a state law that says that. The MTAS training is, my understanding, that it's not required. It's, I do remember it was a few, two or three council meetings ago, I, because I know that we had all three gone, and I just, I stated that I thought it was a good idea for people to go. But if I, if I misspoke on anything on that, I apologize. But I think, like you said, you went to it, it was pretty cool training, so, but I don't think that it's necessarily required.
No, it's not required. If I said that, I apologize, because that's not the case. I just, like Councilman Ebel, like, it's a very good thing for everyone to have, if we can do it, if you can get in. I know everybody has busy schedules, and it's hard to fit these things in, but I, I would go back again, I thought it was that good, to learn what we learned. Okay, moving right along, we have had, it's been quite a while since we had workshops for what used to be called harassment, but now they call it respect in the workplace. So we had workshops for our employees to, I'm sorry, come right in. Seats back there. So we had workshops for this, and we actually had 100%, except for one gentleman who was out sick. We had 100% participation for our employees in these workshops, and we're really thrilled about that. It was an excellent workshop. I think everybody who went, it had a lot of humor, a lot of good things involved in it. So I want to thank all of our employees for taking part in that, which was required. Okay, that one was required, all right. Oh, the one good thing I'm really pleased to report on, I had a, I've had a couple of meetings with Ball State. Went down there and met with the president, one of the vice presidents. We're trying to get some satellite classes here in Carthage, which I think would be wonderful for some of the students who might not want to drive all the way to Gallatin. So we're working on putting together a game plan of that. And there's an initial meeting for anyone who's interested in even adult classes. We may have some of those to offer. The first community meeting will be Thursday, March 14th, at 5:30 at Chamber. So if any of you are interested in just coming to hear what we might be, they might offer here from Ball State, could be a variety of things. And they're kind of going to try to tailor make it for what our needs are here in Smith County. So just let your friends and neighbors know, March 14th, which is Thursday night, at 5:30, Chamber of Commerce. I think it's a very good thing. So that's my report, and the next one will be from the water plant, Ms. Mofield?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, our city attorney.
No report.
Okay. Mr. David Bass. And our supervisor, Teresa Mofield, from the water plant.
Yes, ma'am. As y'all approved a couple of months ago, the actuator on the filter agitator valve, that was installed by Cunningham Electrical last Wednesday. Seems to be doing good. I think it's going to be an asset to our backwash process, and I appreciate y'all allowing me to do it. And also, we made preparations to go ahead. If y'all remember, we approved to do one of the filters now, and the other filters to be done after the budget for the next year. So I went ahead and made preparations with him to go ahead and get parts ordered, so we can start doing that in July. Also, I just want to say everything's going well at the plant, and we're in state compliance, and we encourage everyone to give us a call with questions, or if you have, if you want to come and tour the facility, just, just call us and make a request, and we'd be glad to comply with that.
And I think you do bring the leadership classes through, and you brought some great schedule.
The leadership comes every year, yes, ma'am, but the adult and the youth usually come. And I've had elementary schools, Cub Scouts.
And just as long as you're with them going through, I think, and they make an appointment in advance, so, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
They're always welcome.
Thank you very much. Any questions from anyone there? Okay. Next would be our sewer plant supervisor, Sir Steve Key.
May I come to the podium?
Certainly.
Can you use it, please?
Please do. Come right up here.
We'll discuss the, uh, the, uh, the, uh. Can I ever get used to speaking in front of the crowd?
Okay.
A lot of people like that.
This is a friendly group.
Anyway, if I need help, I've got my partner Ricky Brown.
That's right, good backup, thank you.
First of all, the motion that was made last month for us to continue taking the leachate, it's putting, it put me and Ricky in a pretty, pretty uncomfortable situation because of the flow we're having in the plant. Our average for January was 828,000 gallons a day. So Ricky and I sat down, and we had a specialist come in, and we looked at the collection system, and we, we're getting about 46% of the flow coming in is I and I. We've got a big problem. We looked over the last nine years, and over the last nine years, we've been averaging over 400,000 gallons a day. To answer one of the questions about how we went from 500,000, go ahead.
Is that 400,000 gallons a day of just the leachate?
No.
Okay, just 400,000 gallons a day total?
Total, yeah.
Okay, hang on.
In 1992, they did a plant expansion. That's when they took the, our capacity from 500,000 to 625,000. Well, what they did is they put in a thickener tank and a final digester on the backside of the plant. That's to help process the sludge. Well, the capacity of those two tanks was 127,876 gallons, so that's where they got the extra 125,000. It wasn't on the front side where the flow comes in.
I apologize, just point of inquiry, what year was that? And then it was a thickener tank and a final?
Final digester, in 1992.
Okay, that's the difference, gotcha. Thank you.
So they added the 127,876 gallons, although it was added to the back end of the plant on the sludge handling, it wasn't added to the front of the plant on the flow we can take in. So when we get our draft, a permit draft in, we're gonna, we're gonna turn it back in as 500,000 at that time. But back to the leachate. I've done a lot of study on this, I've read things. The Towne-Carthage Municipal Codes, Chapter 2, Silver Ordinance. Leachate is not a domestic wastewater. It's not something that we get through the normal household, we've always termed that. But it says on 18202 subsection P, what an industrial user is. And the last line of that, it says, "For the purpose of this ordinance, an industrial user is a source of non-domestic waste from industrial process." So once we determine that leachate is an industrial discharge, we have to treat it like we would any other industry that's coming into Towne-Carthage. And basically, the first thing they do is there's an industrial wastewater discharge permit application, and they fill that out. We send it to the TDEC, or the, we send it to the Division of Water Resources, and they locate it and get back with us. But because it is industrial, it puts us into our permit that we have at the plant, which is section 3.2, which is the pre-treatment program. And as of right now, our current program is inactive. I don't know when it went inactive, I don't know the last time we've had an industry here where there had to be one. But it basically says that the program will remain inactive as long as there's no significant industry discharge into the collection system. Should they be, the user request permission to discharge into the sewer system, then Carthage must request that the division reactivate the pre-treatment program. This must be done prior to the industry discharge taking place. So where I'm at with this, because of the Towne Municipal Codes and our permit from EPA, is we need to do this right. I'm not saying leachate can never be dumped into this collection system. I'm saying that because of the municipal code and the permit, there's a process to do it right, and we need to do that right. We need to stop taking it. We need to go take this permit to Mayor Mason, I'll take it to him tomorrow. And I need to fill it out, and we'll go through the proper procedures. So once this is done, and they can get a permit from the Towne-Carthage, whatever they do, this stuff's over with. But right now, we're putting it in our system as a domestic waste, it's not. Ricky and I went last Friday, and we got a sample out of the truck, and. And as that he was putting into our system, well, in the municipal code, 18202 subsection Y, it tells you what normal wastewater is. And there's six things that we have in our municipal code, but three of them, they were in violation of a pretty bad. The COD, the TKN, and the NH3M, which that is chemical oxygen demand, total QOD, nitrogen, and ammonia. So, I'm just here to tell you that as treatment plant operators, we need to do this the right way. And that's all I'm asking to do, is let us stop this, get the industrial permit filled out and go the proper procedure with it.
May I ask a question? I think I'm following what you're saying. Basically, you're saying that our municipal code, which we all abide by, and your permits from TDEC and all of these require you to make sure what's coming in fits the profile of what, and to do that, you've got to go to them with an application first?
Right.
They fill it out and then if that goes through TDEC, then they, then can try to get a permit?
Yeah, our municipal, our municipal code is set in there to protect the Town of Carthage liabilities, our, our infrastructure, our license. I mean, me and Ricky, like I say, we respect the council and I told you when y'all voted, I respect your decision. But you're, you've got two guys, and we had 828,000 gallons a day coming in, and you're telling me I'm taking 10,000 gallons of leachate with that also? Okay, am I treating it? You know, it becomes a time where we have to say, you know, we need to do this the right way. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, let me clarify that. If I'm not mishearing what you're saying, you're saying by law you have to do this.
Oh, yes.
It's not a question, but it hasn't been done. So we have to do it right.
What I'm saying is by, the EPA regulation, state regulation, Town of Carthage Municipal Codes, there is a progress to go through for any industry. And we need to go through that with the landfill because leachate is an industrial discharge. It's not domestic discharge.
So we're required by law?
Right, yes.
Point of inquiry. Is it the council's, is it y'all's opinion that we, we want to go through based on the C-TAS and the M-TAS recommendation that we, we are wanting to go forward within this industrial permit? I think we, I think we voted last, last council meeting that, that we were going to go through with that. So we're, we're right there with you. We, we agree with you. We, we.
You're ready to go?
Well, we, we want to go there. We want to do it right.
I think what he's saying though is by law, he can't take any more in until we, they meet those parameters.
By my MPDS permit, it says, "This must be done prior to the industrial discharge taking place" because normally this would have been done before the industry ever started, you know? We're 31 years behind the ball right now.
But are you saying effective immediately, like tonight?
I'm saying I will go to them tomorrow.
And talk work is amazing.
But now, to me.
The municipal code is something that this council controls. We can always modify the code. So we're stating that basically we're suspending that code so that we can take the right remedial steps and correct it.
But it's not just the code, if I'm understanding correctly. It's TDEC and state laws that they have to, to keep their license, they have to abide by this.
And M-TAS are aware of the situation and are aware that we're taking those remedial steps. I think if it was an issue, they would have brought it up in these meetings.
I think that what has been discovered, if I'm correct, is that this should have been done before the MOU or any of those things were signed because it's not, it's a violation of their license and the laws to do this, is I'm correct?
My concern, and Ricky's is too, is when we're over plant capacity and we're way over plant capacity. And I've got the guy calling in, and listen, I like Johnny, we could have done good, but he's wanting me to take more. And I'm already taking stuff I really don't even need to be taking. You know, I'm asking you to look at our side as your operators, you know? I'm at your mercy in a way. And then again, I'm at, I'm at the state's mercy, but I want this done the correct way.
Well, can I make a statement?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm, I'm for him going tomorrow and talking to the mayor and let's, let's get this done. Let's start on getting it done the right way now. If you're asking like if we have to stop it right now, I think because we already made a motion to continue it until the next council meeting, we have to, we have to abide by that motion. The sooner the better. I, I mean, the sooner we get this done, the better. And if we, if, if your recommendations are to, when we make that decision at the next council meeting that we need to stop taking it until the pipeline's done, I think that would be, I think that would be in.
I don't think that's what he's saying. I don't, I don't mean.
Do you mind if I, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude, but I'm just trying.
You're hearing the urgency in what he's saying.
Do you, yeah, I'm going to finish what I'm saying though, if that's okay.
Go right ahead.
I think what, i- i- there is an urgency that you're saying, but we already ru-, we already ruled on this. And, and now, can we, can we override our rule? But, I mean, I, basically, I'm going to work with the county. I represent the city, but I also live in the county. I want to work with the county. But I want to do this the right way and I think everyone here wants to do the right way.
I agree with you 100%. And then we want to back y'all and support you 100%. What timeframe do you foresee, and I know it's a guess, of resolving this with the county as far as the permit and whatnot? And then beyond that, what do we have, we need to be working for a solution so that if they get the permit, that it's still not causing trouble for you and for the water spring discharge?
Well, I've never had to go through a permit process, so I really can't answer how long. Right now, I'm not addressing the pipeline. I'm not addressing the truck. I'm addressing the leachate, the discharge right now. You know, that is my responsibility as a supervisor. All I can do is come to you and tell you what the tests are. I can tell you what I found in the municipal code. I can tell you what our permit says.
Yes, sir. You are, I don't know who can answer this question, but if we are going to go to them to do this permit, does it have to be approved by the state, by the county, by the city, by who?
My understanding from right here is that once this industrial survey is filled out, it will be sent to the Division of Water Resources, which we will be working with our TDEC representative, hopefully all out of Cool. To, once this is, the way I read this has gone over, they will determine then whether we need to start a pre-treatment program or not within the city. Because our pre-treatment program is not activated right now. But.
Would, would you be able to, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize. Would, would you be able to keep us informed of, of a timeframe as mu-, you know, because the more we, the more we know as a council, if you can keep us up to date, the more we can expedite, help, help you expedite the process. And if it's, if there's a, you know, if there's an issue, we can help, but we got to be able to communicate, know exactly what you, if, if you communicate what you know even outside, you know, there's not a, there's not a, there's not a sunshine law for you talking to me or you talking to, now, if we all talk together, yes. But if you're keeping us informed and giving us information, it helps us make our decisions so we can help you.
May I add something to this? And I, I think this is part of what you've shared with me. Over a month ago, when Mr. Ward was here speaking, Brett Ward, well, even before that, he had asked the engineer for this pipeline project to give him certain criteria of chemicals and things that were in. He needed a sample and he needed to, to see that it was not toxic in the sense that it couldn't be taken in. We have never, he has never yet given us that. That's why these gentlemen had to take their own sample from the truck. And it only, it only hit three of the levels of something like 20-something chemicals and, and metals and everything that has to be tested for. And on, on those three, they were way over limit. So by law, we're putting him in a bind if we say, well, you know now it's beyond the levels that you can legally take in and the TDEC tells you you can take in and EPA tells you you can take in. If we, very honestly, in, in our municipal code and his, his EPA, he, if you read it, which I finally had to read this thing, it goes on forever. It's this thick. It's, it's 18, section 18201. This is, this is part of our municipal code for our sewer system. We all need to be aware of this because we're dealing with this. But in here, he is, he is appointed as the person who makes these decisions. It's even beyond the council because he is responsible for the plant. He, excuse me. He is the one who has the license to run the plant, he and Ricky. He is the one who should be making these decisions because it is his, it's his license that's on the line and he's trying to protect our town. Because at this point, very honestly, somebody could say, "We don't know what you're putting in the Cumberland River downstream from us." They might want to say, "Let's just sue the city of Carthage" because they don't have any notion of what they're putting into the river. He is urgently asking you to do the right thing until we know what's in this, what's the chemical component makeup of this stuff they're bringing down here. Stop and let us get the proper procedure in place. Do the application. Take it to them. This should have been done before that MOU was even signed. Let them do the application. Let them look at the list of things that they have to test for and see if they even want to do this. Because if they don't, they're not being good neighbors to us. They want us to be good neighbors. They're not being good neighbors to us because you cannot ask them to violate their license. You just can't do that.
Well, it was my understanding through their engineer, if I heard him right, he said they had a 42-day holding capacity, you know? Now, I'm hoping this is not going to take that long. But I'm also trying to work within what our permit says, what you're holding me and Ricky to as our license. And like I say, I'm his neighborly and I think Johnny, to tell you, I have been over backward so many times, I want to work, hey, that's part of my landfill too. I pay county taxes, you know? But I have to look at what's best for Town of Carthage. I'm supervisor at that wastewater treatment plant and that's why I'm coming to you, telling you what I think the EPA regulation, state regulation, the Town of Carthage Municipal Code tells me that we need to stop taking it. We need to get this filled out and we need to go the proper process. That's, that's just.
Point of inquiry.
Yes, sir.
What, what does the city do to execute what the will the council that we voted on to move this along so that we can make a proper decision in March?
I will answer that. Okay. When we voted, when this was voted on, when that MOU was signed, when this was voted on, that was all in violation of what, of our.
Not passed, but what are we moving forward? How is it, how is it being executed?
He's coming to you as, as a, out of respect, just to let you know, very honestly, he could have moved ahead with this without, we don't have to locate this. He has by law the authority to say, "You have to, you're an industrial waste. For you to bring a spoonful of this stuff into our system, you have to apply for a permit." That application process takes place. It goes to TDEC. It goes to whoever else has to see this. And if they, if they pass the application, then there's the permit. And if they're willing to abide by the permit and test for all of that toxic stuff, pool of toxic, toxic stuff that's going to come into our sewer system and into the Cumberland River, if he can't, just think of that. For two years, he's been bringing in this stuff. They have no idea. It's not been tested and it's been going out into the Cumberland River.
I'd like for you to answer Mr. Evil's question.
Like, for, for, basically, our, our will was that we do this. That was what we were voting about?
Okay.
And so right now, it's still not been applied for. We, we want you to apply for that permit. That was the, that was the recommendation of the county and the city.
The city, he doesn't apply for it. The county does.
Okay, so let's bring it, let's, right away, let's get this to the county. Let's get this applied for. We're, we're all on board. We already decided on it. So what I'm wondering is, why are we not executing what we want? We want, we want to be done with this. We don't want to be taking this. We're taking, we're taking this, the only reason we're taking this is a courtesy to the county to, to, to give and take a little bit. None of us want this pouring in the way it is. We, we want this going through the line and trickling it in just the way everyone said. If it trickles in, it's going to be a lot better for the environment. What is the city doing to make that happen?
Okay, right now, he has the prerogative to go tomorrow and get this application to the county. That's, that's, that's his job to do that.
That's what my question was asking. That's what we're, we're asking. What is the city, besides going to apply for this permit, what else is the city doing?
Until they have the permit, by law, they can't bring anything else into our, into our system until we know what they're bringing in and they're permitted to do that. It's just a simple thing. If, if a permit, if you were going to build a building, you have to have a permit before you start building that building. This permit, permit was never, back in 2016, when that memorandum of understanding was applied, was signed between two former mayors, they never had a permit to do this. It just went forward. EPA, everybody else that controls these things, there was no permit to bring that stuff. And so for two years, we've been bringing this into our system. All that, Mr.
Basically, what I'm saying is you've continued to let them bring it in as they are now. I'm violating my permit.
And I want to move forward, I want to move forward and, and we just want the city to execute our will and make sure that we can get this line in as soon as possible, get this holding tank built as soon as possible and get this done. And so there are supposed to be M-TAS and C-TAS talking with our city attorney and our county attorney and that this process. So I'm wondering where we stand in that process so that we can make a, so we can make a good decision at the next meeting.
I will answer that. Now that I understand what you're saying, that process is on hold until any kind of permit. No, no, you have to have a permit before you take a spoonful of this.
We can work on that process without having a permit. We can still.
No, you can't because you don't know what's in that. You have to first find out if what's in there is permitted within the EPA and the, and TDEC standards.
I'd like to make a motion.
Excuse me, let me finish. If it's not, then they have to do a pre-treatment. They have to, and it could be very, 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 very costly for them. They have to do a pre-treatment program at the landfill itself.
I'd like to make a motion that the city start working on this right away because I was under the impression that this has been worked on with C-TAS and M-TAS and the attorneys and they can discuss this while they're working on the permit. They can discuss it because otherwise, we're going to extend it. He's going to keep taking leachate. We're going to keep dumping this stuff in there. So we need to be discussing this on the side. We don't have to do A, B, C, D.
It's two separate things. They can still discuss this. But first of all, before they can move forward with anything, bringing any other ounce of this in, they have to have a permit. We now know that.
Why is that not brought up at the last two meetings?
Because we did not know this. This is, this expert who came in.
I didn't know this.
Why didn't you guys know?
Why are we going to punish the county for something that was not known?
No, we're not punishing the county for anything. We're, we're abiding by the laws of the state.
Wait, no, let me interject. You're abiding by the, the laws of the charter, which is in your charter. It talks about that.
No, it's not the charter. It's the municipal code.
Well, the municipal code, the ordinance is, bring that in. The question that I have is twofold. Number one, there's a disconnect between what Mr. Ward said about when to do all this. I mean, I've got his draft permit right here he gave me, but that, if you recall, he mentioned the fact that we need to have this industrial, well, he, he likened it to a, a, what Gornsville was doing on a less stringent basis or informal basis, but they were requiring things to be done. And, and the question is, he was looking at trying to figure out what we got to do and what we got to test for. But that's all contingent on getting the report and the samples that we'd never gotten until y'all got them yourself. And for whatever reason, they haven't been forthcoming from the county on that end. Now, whose fault is that? I have no idea. I have not had, and I don't know that Mr. Ward knew that our, our, what our code said or didn't say with respect to the permit and about whether it could be done or not. But this industrial permit would then begin, if it was passed and, and would be a component part of our overall permit that we're supposed to renew this month, that's still, still not being processed yet. And as you heard from the last meeting, that will still be, we'll still be operating under the old permit until the new permit is done. But the new permit apparently will include the component part of industrial permit. But that is, according to what you, we looked at this morning or this afternoon, that was something that, that the, the industry has to apply for. And then, then if it's, if it's accepted and the constraints are done in an, in an appropriate manner, it becomes part of our overall operating permit.
Yes, sir.
Question on Mr. Ward. He was at our meeting when all this was discussed. I don't know if he is a paid consultant by our city or if he works for the state. I'm not clear on that. But either way, he was here in a, as an official capacity, in an official capacity. And yet, now we're hearing that the information that we had was not complete or whatever. So we were making our motions and our decisions based on who we thought was an expert. Why are we just now finding out that that was inaccurate?
Because it's just been brought to our attention in the last week.
But is he not an expert on the field?
He is an expert, yes. But I think he was, he was trying to accommodate this situation. But the problem is, we can't accommodate something that is not, is going to violate his, his license and our permit.
I'm just wanting it done the proper way.
We do too.
We, we, we all do.
In order to do this, my permit says, they can't put no more in until we get to the permit, until they get a permit. And also, it is putting me and Ricky in a very uncomfortable position with our license because of what we've been recommended to do by the council. I just want you to know that. that.
So, and if we're going to go by Roberts' order, I had a motion on table, so we got to wait for either a second or the motion.
Jacqueline's second.
Jacqueline's second, and so we would, we would, okay, so we've got the discussion. Does anybody have?
I'm sorry, what was your motion again?
Motion was that we just, we could, we get this expedited as much as, as much as possible. We want to expedite, we want to get the permit working on tomorrow, we want to get this done, we want to stop getting this stuff to him, and we're motioning that we keep the discussion going. We don't have to wait for the permit to come through, that could take months. We, we keep the discussion going, we get the legal, everything worked out legally, who's got responsibilities, everything that we voted on, and let's move on it, because as, I was under the impression that this was moved on day after we had this, and I'm, I'm just finding out now that we're not.
Well, I think, again, anytime you have new information, you have to listen to that new information. I didn't know this till this gentleman that came in to, Mr. Ward is out of town, so he brought somebody else in to help us. This new gentleman has worked on, he's worked on permits throughout the state, he did the whole city of Chattanooga's permits for this kind of thing. He is the one that pointed out to us in our own municipal code that we would be in violation if we take in any kind of material that has not met the standards of TDEC or EPA to come into. His, his license will be in violation. So I, I think we're saying the same thing, except it's, okay, the, the process is, take the application, which should have been done in the first place when that MOU was, was signed, they should have had a application and a permit, industrial permit, to go forward with any of that. It wasn't done. So now we're trying to do it within the law, because now that we know this is the law, we cannot ignore it. If we, we can't put Mr. Key and Mr. Brown and, and their licenses at risk, I mean, we can't do that. Again, it's been a courtesy for them to even come here, and, excuse me, come here tonight, because they could by law just go tomorrow and say to Mr. Mason, to Mayor Mason, this is an application, we have to have you fill this out, once this is applied for and accepted by TDEC, then here's the permit. And if you can abide by that and, and meet all the criteria, and there's a list this long of what they can't bring in, they, they have to either pre-treat it at their, their landfill, or they can't bring it in. This is by law. And I don't think any of us want stuff coming through our sewer system into our Cumberland River that we drink and boat in and fish in, that is going to, like the ammonia that came through, they didn't even know about it until they did a test. Don't tell, who knows how much of that?
I think as far as what's been worked on the last month, that was to be between the engineer and Brett Ward more so than me and Johnny, because we just basically talk if he needs, needs to take more leachate or something.
We wanted y'all to be involved, that was our motion, that y'all were involved in all the discussions, so.
I emailed Mr. Ward earlier.
We just wanted to execute it.
And I was told that he would be out of town this week, I haven't heard background it, I was going to try to find out a little more on it, so I'd have more information. But, I mean, I just, I think that's the proper way to do this, if we're going to do it, we need to do it that way. But I think you need to respect the permit that me and Ricky have to work under and say, stop this until we get this part done, and then once they get a discharge permit, then it's, you know, we're legal, let's do it.
Councilman Knappel.
I have a question for Attorney Bass. Are you saying that we are okay to operate under this permit while we're awaiting a new permit?
No.
I ask Attorney Bass.
When you say this permit, what are you talking about?
Because that, that is what he said.
Which permit? The one, the one that we have?
The existing permit.
Not the current one, because it doesn't include the component for the industrial permit.
But until we get a new one, I'm saying, can't we, can we operate under this one until we get the new one?
That, well, I'm telling you that only because I heard the same thing you heard last time we were here, is that it's still good and still valid until it is approved.
But that has no bearing on the fact, yes, they can operate under that permit, but that permit is not industrial waste, and that's what Mr. Squeak said.
That's the big difference. Leachate, if leachate was domestic waste, we're not a problem. They keep putting it in the pipeline, we treat it. But it's not under the municipal code, I mean, it's not domestic, it's industrial. So we have to treat it as industrial, therefore, we have to go through the industrial application. I, I, that's what, you know, why I'm at.
Councilman McKenna.
May I make a motion, Councilman Ebel, hold his motion until first we possibly have a motion to allow them to execute this permit, and then we get back to that.
Just to clarify, I'm trying to apologize, just to clarify, can you say it one more time?
I'm saying that it sounds to me like we first need to act on the fact that we need to get them to go to the county and execute, and get the permit executed by the county. That being said, your motion was to continue to work out a scenario.
While, while they're doing that.
Exactly. So what we're really talking about, it's kind of two different.
I think we're, well, it is two different things, like, I, I just would like them to be, I thought they were talking a month ago, and I'd like him to go in the morning and get this done, and is anybody, is anybody disagree with that?
No, and I think you have to understand that permit process is several months long.
Yeah, it's a long time.
It's not really a form.
But the way with this council has been acting since we've been involved, since I've been involved with it, everything we do is a long drawn out thing.
So, some of it, this one especially, it's, it's, it's several months from, from that water training, it's a several month thing, so, being that it's several months, and we want to, we, I think we all agree, we don't want this stuff pumping in the way it is, that, my motion is that M-TAS, C-TAS, legal, the engineers, and our water, and our wastewater treatment, they are, they discuss how we're going to put this into legal writing that we can vote on next month, and in the meantime, it's a, he can, he can go tomorrow, he could have gone a month ago to get the county to do this. Now, if the county is giving you kickback, please let us know, so that we can, we can know what we're doing, because otherwise, we're operating, we're operating on incomplete information. We've got your back, that's what we're, but if we don't have information, we can't have your back.
Do you have my back on what I'm taking in now to cover me under my permit?
Right now, with the way we, we do, but we're also, it's a, it's a give and take. We're trying to work with the county. Now, if we work with the county and they're not giving anything back, sure, we can, we can end this in March, but if we know, if, we asked that the, we asked that the city execute that this, this be done a month ago, and it wasn't, it's not being, we're just finding out now from you, right now tonight, that it wasn't done. We were okay with you going and applying for this a month ago, and we're just now finding that you haven't been able to. And we're also finding out that M-TAS, C-TAS haven't been talking, legal has not been talking, that you haven't been involved with these talks with them, and so we're, we want that, we want that being done a month ago. And that's all I'm, that's all I'm, am I, am I saying that wrong?
That shouldn't have been suspended.
I think he's also saying, if I'm hearing correctly, if he continues until he has that permit to take this unknown substance in, he's in liability.
Well, me and Ricky both are on.
Which, by law, we can't put him in that.
And if that's, if that's where y'all want to put us, you need to tell.
But we can't.
I don't, I don't think you're, because we had M-TAS and C-TAS here, and they were talking, and no one was talking, no one, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel like you're in some kind of bad liability right now. They, the experts were here.
No, sir.
And they weren't saying, it's, there's opinions and there's facts, and the experts stated facts that we need to get the permit, working on it, so let's get the permit, start working on it, and in the meantime, we're operating off of our charter, which is us, and we're giving, we're, we're giving you a directive, and so, we, we're just going forward with this.
Could I ask, could I ask that you read that section that you read to me about, about what, when you take it?
About the, in the municipal code?
No, in their charter, in, in ordinance.
Was it three point two?
The industrial user or the normal wastewater industrial user?
Yeah.
A source of indirect discharge which does not constitute a discharge of importance under the regular pursuant to section four oh two of the Act. For the purpose of this ordinance, an industrial user is a source of non-domestic waste from industrial.
No, but I'm talking about, about the, what, when you got to not take it because it was, it's got to be permitted and have an industrial permit.
That would be in our permit.
Okay.
It says, I swear it says, the current permit, pre-treatment program is inactive. The program remain inactive as long as no, there's no significant industrial discharge in the flexion system. Should a significant industrial user request permission to discharge into the sewer system, then Carthage must request that the division reactivate the pre-treatment program. This must be done prior to the industrial discharge taking place.
So that's where you're saying that, that we got tarped for the horse with respect to that.
That's what I'm saying, you're putting me more into a legal bind, and Ricky, because I think we've got to look at this as an industry coming in, not that he's been here thirty-one years. I can't heck that he's been here thirty-one years. I guess thirty-one year ago, they never thought they were going to be discharging into, they would have took Carolina leachate, I don't know. But we are where we are, and if anybody's been over backwards for two years, I can tell you Ricky and I have, and I'm not saying that we'll never take leachate, I'm just saying that if we're going to, just please do it the right proper way.
So I'll move the previous question, and that'll end debate.
I'm sorry.
I moved to, I moved the previous question.
What is your motion again?
I moved the previous question. My motion from before, are you asking that I repeat the motion? Motion is to execute the will of the council, that, that, that the city executes the will of the council to work on legal, M-TAS, C-TAS, get the permit from the engineer, and get this, get our sewer treatment plant talking with this, with the, with all these people up at, up at the waste as well, get all them talking and carry out the will of the council. So my, so I move the previous question, which ends the discussion based on Roberts' order.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion then that we proceed with working on the permits with the county to put us in compliance.
Well, actually, I've got, I already got one on the table, so, so I'm moving the previous question, so that's basically ending discussion, so we vote on that motion that I had.
Can I ask just one more question about that?
So I'm, I'm taking the, then I would take the motion off the table.
It's just like, just one quick, it's, I think more like towards Steve, but like, if we, if you give the permit, if you go to the county tomorrow, like, are we not taking any more leachate until?
No.
Like, that's, that's all I want to clarify.
I want to make sure, like.
We would still be taking it.
What happens tomorrow.
Up until, up until our next, our next meeting, basically.
I'm good with that.
I have to interject something here, and I'm sorry if I'm out of order. You're not hearing what he's saying. By law, he cannot keep taking this material until we have a permit.
I hear him loud and clear.
So you're saying you're going to put him in a liability situation?
No, we are, we are the council, we're liable, this is our, this is our.
No, but you don't have control over him and the EPA and what he has to, we cannot override that. We don't have the legal authority to do that.
Okay.
That's not within our jurisdiction.
Then what do we have, what are we doing here?
We're listening to our experts that were here for two different meetings, and told us what we need to do.
We're not legal, yeah.
And if we found out that that's incorrect, now we're saying, well, then let's go forward with the proper permits and go and do it, that we're supporting him, and things are getting jumbled up.
Let's don't throw Mr. Ward under the bus, I mean, we're reliant upon him, but I don't know if he knew what he knew and when he knew it, and, and he's not available to discuss this week, but clearly, he's, he's our go-to person from M-TAS, so we're going to need his, his expertise. Now, I don't know whether he said, you've been going on, if his thought process was, this has been going on for a long time, another ninety days would not hurt, I don't know, but he's just, he put out there on the table some of the very working components that you're addressing now, that, that is in the, in the ordinance here, about the industrial user being a component part of our permit.
We, we gave the county our word that we would, that we would work with them until this date, and I would like to work with them until this date, because we gave our word, and I'm a person of my word, and I, and I want to continue to work with them to that.
We've been working with them for two years, me and Ricky and I.
Okay. And if they, if they don't comply by this date, then I'm sure we're going to all make a different decision at that point. But right now, we're just finding out that nothing's been, nothing's been pushed forward that we have a will to do, so I'm going to move to the previous question, and so that puts it back on the table. Second?
Read it one more time, if you would, please.
Motion to execute the will of the council from the previous meeting, so that M-TAS, C-TAS, the engineers, the waste treatment center, the waste, county waste, our sewer treatment area, and the city attorney and the county attorney meet and discuss, and in the, in the meantime, tomorrow, he goes up and gets, starts the application on the permit.
For clarification then, does that, so, so that is, in the way you believe you have it worded, and I hope you're right, that, that does, if it's passed, then he does start tomorrow with getting the permit done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
May I ask if you're including in there that we abide by the law and stop any toxic material from coming in until the permit, it's permitted to come in?
There's a motion on the floor, so I just, I mean, I think we're going to go back in circles, and I'm just trying to get out of the circle, so.
Nope.
We got a second on the table, so, and, and we've ended discussion, so the, I guess the proper would be for us to call for a vote.
Okay, all in favor, and I'd like a roll call, please.
Last, Mayor Watts.
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Ebel.
Yes.
Councilman Petty.
Yes.
Councilman Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, wait, wait, wait a minute, we're not finished here. Whatever you put in there has not addressed the fact that this is toxic material that is coming in, it's unidentified, we've already identified three elements that should not be coming in here. Now, if you're saying he has to break the law and, and break his license, we cannot put him in that position, and I, as mayor, will overrule that.
I see that as a totally different discussion from one way.
This is a completely, and there's, there's actually six, there's BODs, there's ammonia, there's also chloride, so we want to get.
I'm just saying, this gentleman is in charge of the plant, he knows what he's talking about along with Mr. Ricky back there. He is telling you by law, he cannot keep taking this in now that he knows the law says he can't do that. Now, we can't, we don't have the authority to override that. I'm sorry, this council does not have the authority to override that law. So he goes tomorrow, and he gives that application to the mayor, and says, if you want to apply to this, fine, please do. Then, if they apply, it goes to TDEC. If TDEC okay's it, then it comes back, and they have to then, after the application is, is okay, then they can apply for a permit. It's a process.
Our opinions of the law is different than your opinion.
No, no, that, I'm sorry, we, we, no, I've talked to TDEC, we've talked to, we've talked to a lot of authorities.
We have as well.
So has the TDEC and all the experts that we heard from at the last meeting, has their opinion changed?
No, it hasn't, because Mr. Ward who was here was more or less.
Has their understanding of the law changed?
No, he was addressing.
Has the law changed since the last meeting?
He was addressing the pipeline situation more than this. He's out of, he's traveling now, so he asked this other expert to come in and help Ricky and them through this process. That's when he discovered in our municipal code, which very honestly, if any of us had read this, we would know this ourselves, and it's, I'm just as much to blame as anyone else. It says right here in our municipal code exactly what the authority is for these guys. They have the authority to make every decision for that plant. Now, it's financial and some of that stuff, they have to come to us, but when it comes to safety, for our citizens and for the Cumberland River, they are the ones in charge of making But when it comes to safety for our citizens and for the Cumberland River, they are the ones in charge of making those calls because they are the operators. They've been doing this for twenty-something years. I don't know what they're, how to operate a plant. I don't think any of us do here. So if he's coming to us with all of that experience and say, listen, please, we've got to stop this from coming into our plant until we know what we're dealing with. We already know we have three toxics that are not supposed to be coming in at that level. Does that not matter to you? Seriously?
Of course it matters, but I listened to our experts who are all aware of the law because they're the experts.
Okay.
And that's why we voted to do.
Let me ask you, have you ever been to the sewer plant? Have you ever been down there and kind of see what they're dealing with?
That's irrelevant at this point. For some reason, you've decided that you are bound and determined to have your way on this issue and you're ignoring the votes of the council.
It has nothing to do with me. It has to do with the law. And from day one, that's all I've said. It has to do with the law.
Then why are you continuing to ignore the votes of the council?
Okay, you voted this, but you can't override what he has the authority legally to do. So that's fine that you voted this, but he still has legal authority to do what he has to do to, to keep his license and to keep that plant in compliance.
We're not, we're not allowed at the plant until a few days ago. Like I literally went up there.
Mr. Cole, please don't do that.
Okay.
That's a homeland security lockdown facility. If you want in, just call and make an appointment and go in.
I can show the emails. I'm not allowed at the plant. Okay? So that being said, we've, I, I'll just make a statement. Steve, we got your back and I understand that you see that we have, we might have a different interpretation of the law, but we want to make this work. We've given the county till the seventh or whenever the next meeting is and we want them to comply. I'll be following up with you. I'll be following up with county. I will give you my word. I'm following up with M tasks, C tasks, everybody. I will follow up on it. And I've done it and I hope that my actions speak louder than words and I'll keep it going. I, and, and right now, yeah, and I, 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 I understand that you see it differently than us. And I, and I, and so we just have a difference of opinion, but that still doesn't mean that we, we got, we have your back on this and we want this done right.
Tomorrow because of the rain, I'll probably have two million gallon coming through a five hundred thousand gallon plant. And they'll be dumping leachate. As an operator.
Can we ask them to hold it? Can we ask them to hold it right now?
I would ask them to hold it to.
Does anybody have a problem asking the county to hold it right now because they got four hundred and fifty?
That's where we get into when, when it rains. That's when Johnny needs to move it. Steve don't need to take it.
We, we, let's ask them to hold it. We can ask them to hold it.
If we had that pipeline going right now, you'd be turning it off, right?
Oh, sure. In January, it would have been turned off twenty-five days.
Put a roadblock on the road so the tank can't come down. You got our.
I'll, I'll, I will, I will personally call the mayor tomorrow and ask him if they can hold the leachate. I'm.
Well, that would be his responsibility.
If you'd like to. I mean, whatever, whatever we got to do, like, whatever we got to do to help you and so you know we're, we're with you, we'll do it.
That's what I'm wanting, to be able to stop it until we get the procedure done. And even when we're averaging four hundred thousand gallon a day over a nine-year period, it's not going to get much lower than that. If I'm a five hundred thousand plant, two, we, the other day, we was four hundred and sixty. South Carthage pumps come on, one of the Carthage pumps comes on, we're, we're passing through again. It's just the way plants do it. You know, we've got a lot of collection work to do. We've started on it. Last name's already been doing a lot down at Old Clay Park and stuff. But I'm just trying to get this thing done the right way to cover myself, Ricky's self, our license. And it's not fair to ask us to have more flow coming through three, four times our capacity and say, oh, but you can still dump leachate in my collection system. That's what they're want, that's what they're doing. You know, and that's what I'm trying to stop.
I think it's a good test, forty-two days. Let's ask them if they can hold it for forty-two days right now so we can do it. I mean, I, I don't see why we could, I, I don't see why we can't, why we haven't asked them to hold it up until that. Because we, we've approved that, we've approved that they can dump it, but we didn't disapprove that we could ask them to hold it in their holding pond.
Well, that's, that's a very good, that's a very good idea.
And Steve, I think we back you in that it's your call whether they dump it, you know, or not.
It's too much water right now. So let's, let's hold it.
But I don't know about holding it until the permit.
Yeah.
That's the part I'm not sure of. Can we hold it until it's back to a better level?
Under plant capacity, under five hundred gallons?
I think that, I think that would be fair. I think that'd be fair and, and I think it would be good for all of us to follow up with county. Let them know that while we're making that decision, and I think it's, I think that's, I think that that's reasonable to ask the county. You know, please hold it. And I, I'm, I'm right there with you, Barbara.
But I do think that the city is in the county and this has to be taken care of. We have to work together to find a way for it to be taken care of. We're either doing that or we're dumping on another city. So we really, the city is part of the county. We have to find a way to work together and to take care of this problem. It's all of our problem. It's not just the county's problem.
And I agree a hundred percent. If, if the county wants to be a good neighbor, they could give us five or six million dollars to improve our plant so we can handle this. Or to five or six million to replace all of our sewer lines.
Well, I think when that happens, we're going to want them to be a partner. So I think we need to start that partnership.
And yeah, and this would be a good extension of goodwill to the county to, to help with that partnership. Should we, should we need some help? And, and I think that they would be willing to hold the leachate. I haven't seen anything but, but cooperation and anything I've asked them about. So let's ask them, you know? And if you, if you hear something different, please let us all know. And so that way we can, we, we'll put pressure on the county for you. We will help out. That's what we're here for.
This is a new issue for everybody. Everybody, new, new mayors, everybody's trying to look at it, new council.
We've been working at this for two years and we've jumped through a lot of hoops. But we know during the wet season, we address that usually from October to May. Last year it was seven months. Everything coming up plant stayed in that plant for seven months. We didn't smell it down Main Street, so we did a pretty good job. But on top of that, when I'm over capacity, and that's where I'm getting to with trouble with T deck, and I knowingly bringing in stuff that's not supposed to be brought in, it's my life, you know, it's Ricky's life.
I think we're saying.
But we can go back and ask them to look again after retreat.
We're proud, you're hundred percent. That's what you need to do to be there.
And this is just for January. All the red ones are the days they were over, I would have had to shut the valve. There's only six green ones. It's about the same way in December. For, for December and, and January, there was probably fifteen days the valve would have been open. It would have been forty-something, I think, that would have been closed. So that's where I'm saying.
It's forty-one days, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyway, I know we got you on the menu.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. The next item. Chief Davis, this is a hard act to follow. Can you do it?
Mayor, I don't have anything to do with it.
Oh, come on, come on, chief. Come on, chief.
Hey. Smile on my face and get around it.
How's that new baby doing, chief?
Baby's doing great.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you very much. Is Chief Hyatt?
Chief Hyatt.
Chief Hyatt?
Speedy, the annual report, the website portal is down, but I could get you a monthly report for this month. Probably be able to get a nice sample. Y'all have any questions, we can add to those. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fisher, Mr. Les?
So I don't have a second. I don't have a second.
I got, I'm going to brag on y'all. Last night it flooded behind Mr. Todd's grocery store out there. And these gentlemen were out there knee, waist-deep in that water without a rope around them. I could have shot you. I'm sorry. But, but then they got the backhoe out there and they got it all cleared up and, and you did an amazing job.
Great job.
Thank you for the work.
Always do.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Michael?
No, ma'am.
Okay, moving right along into old business here. We have a report from the planning commission, this amphitheater, what, for kind of an environmental impact and giving citizens a chance to talk about it because they're there.
Think we're skipping ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. What did I, what did I miss?
Discussion responsibility.
Person.
Person. Right on our old business. It's discussion responsibility. City council members, it's defined.
Oh, that's, that's cut off on that. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to basically make this motion and then I'll, I'll give you.
Wait a minute. No, we're, we're in old business, aren't we?
That's correct. Yes.
Here's, here's what, my full name.
That was in the, under new business, wasn't it?
Mine's under all.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've got two different things going.
And Michael, I'll give you this motion in writing. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we, that this is a memo that goes out to all of our city employees and departments. And the memo would say, all city council members, being the legislative body of the city of Carthage, are permitted to obtain any information from any city department or city department employee without permission or filtration of information from the executive body of the city of Carthage. As legislative body, it is our duty to inspect that the wishes of the body are being carried out properly by the executive body. The legislative body approves funding for these departments and therefore must have direct access to these departments. No employee should fear reprisal from any member of the legislative body or executive body for sharing information, facts, or opinions and feel comfortable answering any questions asked of them. So motion's on table.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Are we allowed to have discussion prior to a second?
If you don't have a second, it dies for lack of a section. Then we can discuss anything you want to about this.
We can amend and everything after the second, but.
If it, but it, if it doesn't have a second, it dies and then you can.
I'll second it. All right. So.
Okay, discussion from anyone? Yes, sir.
I agree with the overall concept of what you've proposed. But I do, in light of some of the information that's come along, need to, somehow this needs to include the part that is involved with Homeland Security Act. It needs to be incorporated into this. That this cannot oversee homeland security.
So, so what, so I think proper procedure would be that you're making a motion to amend the motion. So.
It ought to be in lieu of being in compliance with Homeland Security Act.
Okay, so we would put that, where would you want to, where would you want to put that?
You could add a line, said act being subject to the Homeland Security Act.
Said act being subject to Homeland Security Act. I'll, I'll second your motion for the amendment.
I'd like to.
And I think, yes, for the comfort of the employees, I think I would like to add a provision that it would not affect the daily functions of the individual departments. So since we have, since we have their contact information, if we can give them a call, find out the best time.
I'd second that as well. So can you reword that if you don't mind?
You can read my hand writing. It may work.
Thank you.
Let me say this, counsel. This motion is breathing new life to your duties. Your duties begin and end in the, your charter, in the ordinance that, that gives you the power. You've got two pages of duties that are spelled out. Your, your duties don't extend to the fact that you've got the right to go to, to go see every employee. Just think about it. If all six of you are having the many around the table decide it's time for me to go to the individual offices and say, I need to see this. I want to see this. Let me see what you're doing. Your, your collective duties begin and end with that charter and those three pages and nothing more, nothing less. And I've been down here a long time and this is, this is way out past the norm. Does that mean it's bad? No. But it also means you got to live within confines of what your charter says or you got to have it amended. It's private act charter and there's a process for all that. But, but I'm not sure that this, this is consistent with what your charter actually gives you the authority to do on C three in, in your, in your, in your.
Section nine, isn't it?
Well, it's on page, yeah, it's section nine, but it's on page C three in, in the charter.
I'd like to make a statement that this whole thing that just happened here might not have happened. We would know if we had access to employees that some of this stuff was not being carried out because I didn't know until tonight. And if I don't have access, I mean, I've never not, I mean, we, we've got to be able to.
Counselmen, they didn't know until, even if.
Nobody knew. Well, I mean, and, and it's not my, it's, it's not my, it's not my job to see how involved they want to be or not. That's up to them, but maybe they, maybe they would want to. Now, I would like, and I'm, and I can speak for myself. That's why I'm discussing this publicly in front of everybody. But I would like to, and, and with these provisions that have been recommended, I would like access to my, to the city employees. I'd like, I'd like to be able to have that transparency and share without unaltered viewpoints.
When have you not had access?
I can give you the, I mean, I can give you the emails, basically said that unless it's, unless, if I want, you've told me directly that if I want to talk to a plant employee, I need to be going through you.
I told you if you were making pictures at a plant, which is against, is a violation of homeland security, you could not be posting those on Facebook.
Pictures are. I can't take pictures of where chlorine is stored, when it comes in, or possibly the gates. I can't take pictures of water in vials.
Mr. Ward sent you, he sent you the section from homeland security saying.
Very familiar with it.
Any records such as photos taken inside could not be public.
Very familiar with classified, top secret, secret clearances. And the clearance that is here is just, it's, it's a fence and it's chlorine. Those are two things that fall under the homeland security. I'm very familiar with it. Thank you.
Have they ever not let you in? If you called ahead and said, I want to come see you? Have they never not let you in? If you called ahead and said, I need an appointment to come and talk to you? Name me one time they haven't allowed you to do that.
It will be the first time since I've lived here that I've ever called ahead for an appointment. Like, and, and I'm happy, I'm happy to do so.
These people are busy working every day in that plant. So if you want to come see them, you need an appointment.
I'm happy to do so. And, and I would like you to ask anyone, any of these, if I've ever interrupted their work.
May, may I ask you something? You quoted something in, in your Facebook page from some obscure title, six of whatever. It has nothing to do with section nine of our private act charter that tells what the duties and responsibilities of our legislature are, or not legislature, the council.
So we're getting into facts and opinions right here.
No, it's not an opinion. That's what our, our charter governs us. It's a private act charter that governs us. You learn that, we all learned that in that class that we took, the elected officials.
I just like access.
We're not governed by Title Six of Tennessee Code Annotating.
Okay. I'd like access to, because I, I, there's been instances in the past and I've had, and I'm not going to name names, but I've had people that feel intimidated by saying certain, certain things. And so I would like them not to feel that way.
Would you please tell me who said that? I want to know names. Tell me who said that.
Exactly.
You're, you're being so transparent. Tell us who it is.
I gave by confidence that I'm not going to tell someone, basically if they're saying that they feel like they are being, if they feel like.
Could I take a poll of the people who are here? Mr. Steve, have I ever intimidated you to say no? Mr. Rusty, have I ever intimidated? Mr. Les, have I ever intimidated? No, okay. Anybody? Ms. Teresa, have I ever, okay. I don't know who we're talking about.
It's pretty intimidating to ask that question publicly here on live.
I think we've been given permission. I really don't think this is needed, although I agree we should have access. I think we've been given permission. If we call and make an appointment, and I think that's more than fair to call and make an appointment with the director.
Exactly.
And we've been invited. So I, I'm going to post this, but I don't think it's necessary. And I kind of agree with the attorney. It may be going outside of what we need to do. But I feel like I've not been refused. I've been through the water plant. I've not been refused. I, I really feel like we have permission already. We just have to be really cautious. I would be very cautious in taking pictures. I don't think I would take pictures there. But I really think we have access to anything in the city that we need. We always have had, really.
And, and I, and I agree with you and I, I, I wish I felt this wasn't needed, but I, I kind of feel it is just because of, and I have never been denied by anyone at these facilities. I've been denied specifically by you. And so that being said.
I'm sorry. When have I denied you? Excuse me, councilman. I want you to answer me. When have I denied you access to any of these places?
Give me one moment and I will quote you.
I sent you an original email that said, please do not take pictures. I was told you were taking pictures of chemicals inside the plant. Please destroy those. You're not supposed to post those. That's what I asked you. Are you finding that? May I address something that, you weren't with us the other day? We, the M tasks person, Mr. Jekyll came to talk to us. And he was very specific. He teaches this class that you and I both took. He teaches it in a different situation. He specifically said to all of us sitting there, the responsibilities and the authority of the council abides in the six of you coming together deliberating, voting. Outside of that, an individual councilperson does not have the authority to, to make law, to do anything. It's the, it's the collective coming together that deliberates and votes. That's what it says in our charter. It's a private act charter. And for you to want to go to another charter and say, this is what you get to do, I, I, I'm sorry. That's just not, that's not our charter. Yes, sir.
My ass. Mr. Bass, your opinion of particularly the two of them bannering back and forth with emails, your thoughts on the sunshine law?
Well, if they responded to each other and that leads to, to decisions by the, by the organization, by the council, I guess that, that would be certainly a violation. Now, if they're just going back and forth about policy, it's certainly dance around the hedge, edges. What I saw, and, and I don't read Facebook or blogs and don't care to and don't want to other than that they were highlighted to me during this incident. One of the things that concerned me is, is that Mr. Ebel put on there the, the response that I made, which I don't personally care, other than the fact that it is essentially violating attorney-client confidentiality. If it's just between us two, Mr. Ebel and myself, and he wants to do that and waives it, that's fine. But you can't waive a collective attorney-client confidentiality with all of you. So unless y'all around the table say, I don't care if he wants to put it on or I want to put it on, that's fine. You know, it's fine. Y'all waive it all collectively. If you don't, then don't do that.
So my, was I incorrect in, in sharing what you said? Is that, I did, and I apologize. I didn't know we had an attorney-client privilege from a previous, from a previous discussion with you. Asked if I could come to you with things and you, and with, with issues, and you said that you worked at the pleasure of the mayor.
I do.
And, and so I didn't know that we, you and I had attorney-client privileges. So, and if I was out of line, I apologize. But from what I, my previous conversation with you is, was I didn't think we had that.
If I'm, if I'm sending out a memo to all the, the council as the city attorney, then yes, it's a client.
Okay.
And if y'all want to waive it, that's fine. I probably won't be sending out any more memos.
Well, and I, if, if I was wrong there, I'll, I'll take full responsibility and, and say, I apologize for that. I'm in no disregard for that.
Her email, when you sent it to all of us, and then I read your email, and I read it again, part of it down through your blogs. I stopped, but I already read it. That's what I think where we're getting at, is that right that we can do that? Because you were quoting what she said in her email.
Because you were quoting what she said in her email, okay? Which, we as councilpeople already read it.
I think, I think that the gist of the sunshine law and the gist of-
I mean, when you have to quote it exactly the way she said it, or you said it, or whatever, word for word, not your interpretation of what she said.
Yes, and which is all I-
I didn't go back and compare-
And that's all I did, is just copy and paste.
Okay, I didn't go back and compare the two conversations.
I'd like to add to that.
She had no conversation.
I'd like to also add to that, the very first email I sent to you was when one of the operators from the plant came to me and said, I don't know if I've done the right thing. Mr. Evil asked to take pictures of chemicals. I said, no, we can't do that. That's when I sent you, I sent you the email-
Can you rephrase that?
Excuse me. That's when I sent you the very first email. It was only to you, and I copied the supervisor just to let them know I'd sent it to you. Please do not take pictures inside the plant, especially of chemicals. Please destroy that. No, excuse me. It was a personal email to you. The next thing I knew, you posted it all over your Facebook page. It was my request as the mayor not to go in and take pictures.
Never once did I request to take pictures of chemicals, once. And if that was recorded to you, I apologize. Not once, in fact, I shared the pictures that I did. And all I took pictures was, was little beakers, full of water or empty of water. And then I took pictures from the road.
We have a motion on the floor.
Please go ahead, whatever that motion is.
We have a motion and a second.
And two amendments.
Okay. You might want to tell us all that again.
Okay, so basically the motion on the floor with the amendments, and we would have to vote on both amendments separately. It would say, all city council members being the legislative body of the City of Carthage are permitted to obtain any information from any city department or department employee without permission or filtration of information from the executive body of the City of Carthage. As legislative body, it is our duty to inspect the wishes of the body that are being carried out and properly by execute, properly by the executive body. The legislative body approves funding for these departments and therefore must have direct access to these departments. No employee should fear reprisal from any member of the legislative body or the executive body for sharing the information, facts, or opinions, and feel comfortable answering any questions asked of them. Said act being subject to, the first, the first amendment would be said act being subject to Department of Homeland Security Act, and Second Amendment would be so long as it does not affect the daily functions of the department. And then, so we would, the, basically, we would, the first one, I've seconded his motions to add that, so we would vote on that, to add that, that line item, which was the Department of Homeland Security. So-
May I ask a point of inquiry on this? Are you saying you want to change what responsibilities and authority you have in our private act charter to do that?
No. Saying I'd like this amendment to go out, so that basically-
I believe it would take a change in our private act-
May I, may I answer the question? All I'm asking is that this letter goes out to the, basically, this is a, this is a letter to city employees that says, it's okay for them to talk to us as long as we're not interfering with their job, and as long as we're not interfering with the Department of Homeland Security.
It's been done, but they're able to talk to you now if you make an appointment. And also, do you understand we have an open records? Even if the mayor, the governor came and wanted, he would have to go through our open records act. And we've told you that. Anything you want, fill out an open records form, so there's, there's, there is a history of this, and we'll get it to you. I will give it to you and everybody else in here.
Given Attorney Bass's concerns, I would state that this should go out as a memorandum to all employees rather than as an ordinance or any other act, so that we do not inadvertently expand our duties beyond our charter.
And I agree, and that's the way, that's the way I motion, basically, it was a memorandum to be given to all city employees. It's a memorandum. It's not a law. We're not changing a law. We're just making sure that they know it's clear, that it's okay, because there's been some confusion in it. Obviously, there's confusion that I was taking pictures of chemicals. Didn't happen. Never would ask to do that. So, so, I guess we would, I will go ahead and move the previous question on Sam's amendment.
Given light of the discussion, I feel that we should not move forward on this amendment at this time.
At this time. So you withdraw, you withdraw your amendment?
I would.
We're doing this Robert's rules, so-
I, I made it purely to protect us against the basic amendment that was proposed.
Okay. And then, so we go to yours then, which was yours, and, and I seconded that.
It's a memorandum rather than an amendment to the charter or an ordinance.
Yes, and that was, that was actually my initial motion, was it, it was a memorandum.
Well, you can call it what it is, which is a duck, walks like a duck, is a duck. Now, the question is, and I don't know, can that possibly, mention that, can that possibly be construed to broaden the duties within the confines of these two pages? I would probably refer to MTS Legal. If, if you pass this, I'd probably go to them, and maybe you want to table it, and I'll take that and, and ask them if that, if that expands the duties available to the town council. And if that's the case, you probably don't want to pass it.
I would like to see it tabled until-
Yes, I can second that if it's required.
So, so just to, we're going by procedures, would you, do you want to withdraw your-
No, I won't withdraw, but we will table it-
We'll ta, table it so-
Until we can hear from MTS, and then like the vote on the next one.
Just write, somebody write up the motion for me as amendment.
I'm sorry, we have a motion to table this, right?
Okay. So what, what, what we'll do, I guess, make sure we're cut, because you-
A motion to-
Can you withdraw your motion?
Yes, so would, properly, I think, and I'm just trying to abide by her rules on this. So if, if we're withdrawing a motion, I guess, I can withdraw in the middle of it, correct? Okay. So I'm just going to withdraw my motion and table this, and we'll, we'll work on it with MTS. So motion withdrawn.
So we're asking our attorney to check MTS about this?
As, as submitted, without the amendments. That this be a memorandum.
I'll follow you checking with the amendments.
With the amendments as a memorandum.
With the memorandum.
Yep.
See your minutes.
If you just copy.
Okay. So was that a motion to table?
So we've tabled it, so we can move on.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Ah, there are we, okay.
All in favor and opposed to the table?
Did we have a motion to table and a second to that?
Yes. Motion and be one of us, which I will give.
Okay, okay. All in favor of tabling this.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. So here, I missed a page here. What's the next?
Status of the C on water.
You're still there.
No.
Oh, okay. Yes, I did miss a.
Okay, yeah. Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I, I, I'm just bringing this up again, because we've had a couple of citizens who had an interesting idea about these lots. They've been dequeased to us, and we have really no need for, because there's nothing that we can do on them. Someone has suggested, because apparently we have that lot in the one beside of it, that we offered up to Habitat to allow them to build something, they could build on the side lot and then put, keep the one that nothing can be built on. And basically, we're talking about straight down, they would have to build a basement up somehow, but if they should, I would like to offer it up to them to see if they want it. Is that something-
Just as a matter of discussion, are, are we talking about a single-family dwelling?
Well, it, it can't, we couldn't, it can't be put on that lot we were discussing, but apparently there's another lot beside of it. There's, there's a lot at, at 309 and 307. They're side by side. One is the one that was just, the house was demolished on. We can't rebuild anything on that. But there is another one that was given to the city some time back, right beside of it, that something could be built on. And that lot in the, between would just be kept open, as an open space.
Point of inquiry, with, I, I've thought that there was, is there some, is the one lot, there were not allowed, there's nothing allowed to be built there? There was a contingency of that?
That's the one at 309.
But the other lot, there's, we can, something can be built there.
Apparently, we own that one too. It's about the same size, and it has that deep drop off if someone like Habitat wanted to build on it.
What is this on?
It's residential.
I would suggest-
Single-family, is it single-family or?
Yeah, it's, it's a very, it's not a large lot. It's about the same size as the other one.
Point of inquiry, what do we pay for the two?
It was given to us both.
So both were gifted?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would suggest that we do have an open forum with the citizens to get their ideas on this, because it's going to impact the people around it.
Okay, okay.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Would you like?
That we hold an open forum regarding the lots, I'm going to say on Water Street, in regards to future use.
Right. It's 307 and 309 and Water Street.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Can we include in that to also talk to Habitat and see if they're even interested, if that would be feasible for them?
With, with a public discussion, it will be, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Public discussion, like the residents around that lot, those lots, I mean, if I were living there in that area, I might, you know.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, is to allow residents, whether they live there or not, and, which would also include Habitat, because they would be involved with this discussion also.
So do we want to advertise for a public meeting for this, and when do you want to do it?
Do we do it before the next, for the March meeting?
Can we tie it in with something else?
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, maybe we could do it pre, prior to the March meeting? Yeah.
Okay, we can have thirty minutes, thirty minutes, an hour prior to the March meeting. You want to do that? The March meeting is-
Okay, so I'll, I'll-
March 7.
Okay, our March meeting is March 7, so you want to say 5:30?
5:30.
Do I have a public hearing? Okay. Okay, do I have a, do I have, do I have a second to that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of having a public hearing, 5:30 on March 7, prior to our meeting, to discuss this with anyone who wants to, and include the possibility of Habitat being included in that discussion?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, we have a report, I think, somewhere from the Planning Commission. The amphitheater situation was brought before them just because there was never even environmental impact and all this stuff done on it, so they discussed it and had some of the neighbors to come and talk to the Planning Commission, and Mr. Duke, it was going to be Mr. Sholter, he's apparently sick, so Mr. Duke would do-
Mr. Sholter's got the flu, so.
Okay, could you start to read what the Planning Commission came up with?
I'll just read the, the, one paragraph here. It says, several residents were present and voiced concern with questions about the proposed amphitheater. This was during our Planning Commission meeting on January the 16th, and the Commission commenced discussion on the issue and determined that due to noise concerns, budgetary concerns, zoning concerns, lack of environmental studies and locations, that a letter of non-approval be sent to the full council. Chairman Sholter advised that they would be, they would be provided a copy of this. Councilman Evil, which is on our Planning Commission as well, made a motion that the Planning Commission recommended halting this project due to the reasons listed above. I second the motion, and it was, it was carried unanimously.
Okay. Do, we, we extended an invitation if any of the residents in that area wanted to talk again to the actual count. Yes, sir?
Question is, does that, is that intended to stop the project altogether, or to stop it just at that location?
Um, it-
Because it didn't seem too clear, but I, I know where it, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it would be, I think it would be reasonable to say it was at that location. I think, you know.
I'm not saying it's necessarily, I personally think it's a good idea to build one. I don't think it's a good idea in light of what the residents around it, the other residents primarily, some are for and some are against it, but if some are, or in or against it, I agree that we not do it there, but I think that we owe it to the citizens of Carthage to consider other alternatives somewhere else.
Right. Part of, part of things that we discussed, that came into it, was the budgeting and the, and the cost of, but I think that might be outside our purview as a, a planning commission to be talking about that. We, we need to go by the, I think we were going by the zoning, zoning codes in, in, in making our decisions. We don't want to kill it.
If, if I could address what you're saying there, whether I'm for or against it, I did speak with Jody Slinger. She's, she works with a lot of the grants, and it was specifically this.
Slager?
Slager, yeah. It's like, maybe I have her name wrong. I apologize for her name wrong. And she, she did say, we can, there are ways to transfer this grant into other things. She said there are ways. Now, it's, it's, it's not an easy process, but it is a process. It has been done before. So it's a possibility, to answer your question. But yeah, I think what, basically, the main intention of the Planning Commission was to absolutely kill it where it's at, and then I don't think we necessarily, we, because it was just, we're just, we're just voting for where it's at, because if, if there's a new location, we don't know about it, so really, we can't make a decision on anything like that.
I think a new location would come before the Planning Commission, like anything would beforehand, and then we would talk about that as well.
With working with state grants, you don't want to turn them down if you can help, because the next time you go to apply for one, you're on the list, as I've done that before. So I mean, by moving it around into another location, that's okay, but just to say, no, listen, you could do what-
We have two years to, we have two years to look at alternatives, so.
We don't want to.
And she also said it doesn't even have to necessarily be an amphitheater, amphitheater, I can't ever say that right, amphitheater either. She said it could be other things that are enhanced tourism, and things that get, get crowds in, so.
Since we have our doc, our grant writer back here, Ms. Dawn, can you add any, anything to this understanding?
This is all news to me. I hadn't heard any, I hadn't been involved, and I didn't know it go.
But as far as-
As far as grants go.
As far as grants go, can you move them around to a different location, or are they locked into that location with that grant?
I would have to ask the funding agency. I wouldn't, off the top of my head, you know, every, every funding agency is different, so.
Yes, sir.
May I ask Virginia to address this issue, if you will to, because we work together on, on similar situation in Gainesboro.
Well, I'll just speak on the Gainesboro project, actually. They have a theater project for their downtown. The land was not able to be used, excuse me, because of previous voters that were between two buildings. It did not work out for us to move the amphitheater, but it was proposed, and the reason that it did not work out was because of the grant deadline. And so, but it had been proposed to move locations if property owners were willing to sell, or if it was already city-owned property, there were options there. So I do think it's possible. I also work with Jody Slager. I've worked with her on many projects, and I think that if you have spoken with her, she is probably guiding them in the right direction. I cannot say for sure her decision on this particular project and this location, but I do know she is flexible, and I know the citizens want to see these projects funded, and they want to see them successful, so.
And that's what I gather, they, they want something like this to happen, because what they're trying to do is they're trying to generate sales tax from it, that's what they're at. And so they want to make sure it's in a location that will generate that sales tax, and that helps us out as a city as well. So we want something that will work for us, but as far as the Planning Commission goes, we're basing it based on that one area, as far as future goes, that would be a count, that'd be a council decision.
I just wanted some clarification for either, I think I'm supposed to call you Mr. Duke. But anyway, I just want to make sure that the Planning Commission's decision there did not throw the grant back immediately.
I think we made our, our decision based on plan, planning zones, I mean zoning codes, is kind of where we were coming from, rather than anything else.
I do have another question on that, I just want to back up, because I don't know that I have all the information. The last meeting that I recall us speaking about that, we were going to even say if the funds were still available, based on, there could have been a letter sent to return the funds.
It's in, it's in limbo, they're waiting to hear back from.
So we don't know if the funds are still available yet?
Have we heard back, whether the question stopped?
It's all on hold until there's some decision from all of the planning and everything else.
So it's still, the funds are still available, we just, it's not just on hold, okay.
And how long do we have to spend those funds?
Roughly two, roughly two years, Sydney.
Ms. Dawn?
Okay, you didn't say my name.
I'm sorry.
Dawn Cooper. The, the mayor sent a letter to the funding agency to get, to stop the project, and then I called them after the last meeting, you guys voted, and they said that we could, if she would send another letter to reopen it, and that was the last I have been called at.
And we were waiting to hear from the Planning Commission, and I've talked to her since then, and I told her, we're waiting to hear from all of these various groups and the citizens, where we're going to go with this.
One other question, how many people, how many neighbors, I've only heard from one, so that's why I'm asking. How many people were against it in that area?
That night, we had, we had one, well, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, and then those people brought information from other people that lived around them as well. And since then, since I'm on the Planning Commission, I've heard from ten or fifteen more in that area.
Present were in that area.
The people that were present, or representing people who were in, were present, were in that area. As a matter of fact, a couple of them, I think they proposed to not come up, some of them were just contingent to the property. You know, they're not crossing it or whatever. And their concerns were, you know, they were, they were legitimate concerns about living across from something like that, signatures.
And we do have, we have overlooked to anyone who, who are citizens who would like to talk to that, that's, I am on their agenda, so, yes, sir.
I would like to say, my name is Susan Solone, this property backs up right to ours. My comment is just, as Bill Reese said, a public forum on another thing, there was never a public forum on this.
Actually, ma'am, we had three public hearings last year.
None of us were notified.
I was.
They were published, I mean, so, but we had three hearings.
But I would like to say, I went out Sunday and went to our neighbors, some of them had never heard of it. Almost everyone I went to was opposed.
And, and just to, just to show the council, they just took three hours on, on Sunday to go knock on door-to-door, and whoever was home that answered, there were thirty people asked, twenty-eight of them were opposed. You'll see their signatures, their addresses, and their names right here, and they were adamantly opposed to it. You'll see a map of where they're located, right here, this is where the amphitheater is, and these people are opposed to it. So it's not an opinion that, and this is just, they placed it, we're not, now, two were for it, but it's a ninety-five percent rate of opposition. Now, let's, it, it could be happenstance that the other fifty percent of people, we knock on their door, and all of them are in favor of it, we don't know if that's the case. But of the people that were home, that's who was opposed, and it's not that they're opposed to an amphitheater, amphitheater project, they are, they're just opposed to it being right there, they don't want it in there, they don't want it where they live. And, and so, I don't think most of these people are trying to kill the whole project, they, they just don't want it there. So, and, and I just, I tried to make it, and I had a lot of help from constituents, so that it was fact-based. It's not my opinion, I'm not trying to put my opinion out there, I'm just trying to represent constituents, and that way y'all could see as well. And there was one, there was one, a couple that said, we're one hundred percent for it, so, I mean, that, that was somewhat.
What I was saying, in public forum, I think that was for long before I was in this, as a councilperson.
Well, may I just say, in, in the fall, we heard about this project.
I've heard, yeah.
And in the fall, I sent a Facebook message to the Carthage office, and I got a note back saying, it's on hold, we took it as it's done, and then all of a sudden, it just reappeared.
I think, and you and I probably have two of the closest proximities to it, and hearing from all the people, you and several others, that I think we're all in agreement that that is not the proper place to put that amphitheater. And there may not be a proper place, but I, I say that we need to go forward and look into the avenues that we possibly have, with the understanding that that is not a good place to do it for, not only for the reason that, of the noise and all, but it also stays underwater most of the time.
If anybody had gone by there today or last night, yes, it's.
Anytime in the last month, because I walk the track near there today.
Three inches of rain.
Are there any other neighbors who would like to comment on this, yes, sir?
I just wanted to get this.
Could you identify yourself?
Brian Roberts. My property also adjoins to the property that's, that's being discussed. And let me start by saying this, and some of you were there, and I can't remember, Mr. Ray may not be able to remember, when I purchased the, I purchased a little bit of property from the city, and I did that because I wanted a buffer between my understanding of what was going to be a walking track and my property, because I didn't want somebody walking right outside my bedroom window, okay? So I felt like I needed a little bit of more privacy, and so I purchased a little bit of that. At that time, the mayor told me to my face that he was thinking about coming up with this, a possible amphitheater, and I said, hey, man, that'll be right outside my bedroom window, I said, I don't want it. And, and after discussing it for a few minutes, he led me to believe that he wasn't aware that, apparently that people lived right next to it, I don't know how that was possible, but, and that, you know, after consideration that people lived there, and it would be right in the middle of people's homes, that it was done, and that's the last I'd heard of it. So, you know, to find out then, that for whatever reason, this, this body had been, I guess, trying to continue to push it, you know, if you want it, that's fine, I'm not against amphitheater anyway, but let me tell you this, build it outside of your bedroom window, if you want to. Not outside my bedroom window. And I understand, it's the city's property, and, and that's fine, but it's not zoned for that. It's underwater, right? I promise you, everybody that lives there, everybody I talked to, I had zero people tell me, I had one person that said that she wasn't at all familiar with the situation, she had just moved in about a month, a month and a half ago, and she didn't want to say either way. Everybody else I spoke to said they were one hundred percent against it. And they all, their property all lined up right there with it, so, you know, and it seems, and I, and I asked several questions at, at that last meeting, you know, what is the, first, and it was hard to get answers, even from, from the mayor then, what purpose, for what purpose, what purpose are we meeting, right, by building at the amphitheater? What is the ultimate goal of the amphitheater? What acts are going to be at the amphitheater? What, what is your parking, right? What about trash? What about, I mean, there's a lot of issues that I don't know that anybody has taken into account.
And that's something that Joe, when I spoke with Jody, she said, you know, we needed to, we needed to make sure we had programming for it, we had a maintenance plan, a budget for daily, weekly, monthly maintenance, and then utilizing staging, like, basically, are, there needs to be a demand for it. Like, what demand do we have that we're not getting right now? But, I mean, all that, all being said, I mean.
What is this going to do to, to my ability to sell my home, should I decide to?
How long have you lived there?
I've lived there now for about four years.
That, that probably is a great landmark.
Well. If, if, if there's an amphitheater there, I mean, I'm not sure there's a lot of, a lot of people that's going to be in the, in the market for building, for buying a house beside a music venue.
Councilman Teddy.
In my opinion, we've had a substantial discussion, and the overlying feeling is that the residents in the area in particular do not want the amphitheater. I would, I make a motion that we vote to not build the amphitheater on the existing site, being the old trailer park.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any discussion? I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm a citizen, I'm concerned about, can anybody answer any of those questions that I just?
Well, we have a motion not to build it there.
Well, I know, man, if, if there's going to be an amphitheater.
Add a note in form, I think we can, yeah, and I agree, that's what it's all about.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, no discussion, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of, would you repeat your motion again?
I make a motion that the amphitheater be not, be, that the amphitheater not be built on the existing planned site, which we call the old trailer park.
Okay, okay, all in favor of this motion? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we'll go forth with the public meeting to discuss this further, and we'll hopefully answer your question by that time. Thank you, thank you for coming. Alrighty.
Still have the Planning Commission recommendation.
Yes, yes, we've got a couple more things coming. That's a new business. Speaking of the facade grant, we have Ms. Dawn with Quill Consultants, do you want to say anything about that?
The facade grant is, we've had meetings with the committee, and we are, the mayor is reviewing all the documentation I provided to her, which includes the applications for the building owners, and the scoring sheets, and all the information for the building owners for a public meeting that she's going to set.
And I believe it's going to be, what's the date for the public to come, is it March?
If you, it's the date we discussed originally, you want to have that date, it's the twentieth of February.
Twentieth of February, and that's a Wednesday, I believe? Okay, so, and we'll be putting notices out about this for anyone.
What time and location?
It's here, here.
Here at six o'clock.
And we'll, there will be notifications going around to all the business owners. This is, for those of you who may not have heard, it's a facade grant for, to help doors, windows, awnings on the downtown buildings, hopefully to give it a more historic look.
Have you, you have the applications yet?
The mayor has them, she's, she's got them, and she's reviewing them. I'm just waiting for her to give them back to me.
Are you taking them to the businesses?
Have we reviewed them in the committee? I don't think we have.
We've reviewed them the last two meetings.
We, we have a committee.
At the last two meetings, I've given out the applications, and we've reviewed them at the last two meetings.
We may have to have a short meeting before then, then, to look over them one more time. We'll, we'll talk about that. I've got, I've got the packet, you sent these, that's what we were going to send out, but we'll talk about that.
Councilman Reese's question, have we taken those to the businesses?
The question was.
Like, taking the.
Several people have asked me, our businesses.
I don't think we have yet.
I've received initial inquiries about the program, maybe before the grant was, was submitted, but I've received something that my office is about to.
And I think on the twentieth is when we were going to give the applications to these people, weren't we? That's my understanding.
If you allow me to tell you what I think, I will give you an overview of what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Okay, so this is just my personal opinion, so we've had two meetings, and at those two meetings, I gave out the application, the instructions to application, the scoring sheet, and everybody reviewed and gave me suggestions, I updated those suggestions, gave them to the mayor. My thought was, from those two meetings, where we were going to have a meeting on the twentieth at six o'clock, for building owners, invite building owners to come and look at the applications, review the instructions, discuss how the committee that the mayor has chosen will score their applications, and go over all that stuff on the twentieth. I gave the mayor some flyer ideas and some social media for her to advertise, and we can send those out, I mean, I can help you do that.
Well, we were, we are going to put, it's going to go on the Facebook, and we're going to send it to all the businesses, yes. But the meeting itself, I believe, is where they'll get the application that night. That's what I've been telling people anyway, to come to.
I thought she was going to deliver, that's why I said.
Oh, okay.
I was going to what?
I thought you were going to take them around.
The application?
She, the mayor said she wanted to, she told me at the, she said she was going to take care of the publicity, so I.
Right, and, and again, that night too, will be when most of the people come to.
So if they haven't all went in, like, from when you, they went out before?
That's a question for Dawn, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
If they, if they applied prior, when you first started this?
They, we will work with them on putting it into the new application, because that application was just kind of a, an idea of it, but then between the committee and the mayor, they've come up with a more broad application, and so we'll have to transfer that over, and I can work with each of those people. We actually put it in the, if it stays in there, in the instructions that I would work with anyone that wanted to develop an application, so it'd be a real strong application.
We may have a special meeting, mind you bring this up today, okay. Thank you. Mr. Warner, I think is left, but, okay, the new business items, we have, I've called people to be on the board of zoning appeals, and they have agreed to do this, and I just have to get an okay from the council. The people who've agreed to be on it are Philip Kinslow, Jennifer Honey, Roger Duke, Deborah Taylor, and Ronnie Butler. Can I, can I get a?
Even though they make two more time.
Give them a minute.
Yes, Philip Kinslow.
Okay.
Jennifer Honey. Roger Duke. And I'll send these, I'll give an email to you if we approve this, Deborah Taylor and Ronnie Butler. Tried to choose people from different parts of town with different experiences. Some, some have past experience with real estate, but they're not involved with this film. I mean, I mean, basically, it just needs approval by y'all to go forward with this, is what I.
Motion approve that facade board.
It's for the zoning.
For the zoning, sorry, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor? All right, thank you, we'll move forward then. Okay, we have a representative here for some happy stuff from Boys and Girls State, Mr. Raymond Lawrence with the American Legion, wants to tell us just a little bit about why he would like us to keep sponsoring this.
Well, this is the first time I've been, I'm doing it at the, at, for the mayor's level. It's only my second year doing the American Legion Boys and Girls State, and I don't know if you are all familiar with the program or not, but for you is the flyers for both of them, and I'm not good at public speaking either, so just bear with me, it's like, hamina, hamina, hamina. It's a great organization, it teaches high school students in their junior year, they have to be in the top one-third of their class, they have to have a high level of Americanism, and they have to be outspoken. Those are the three requirements that we request, because when they go, the boys would go to T T U, and the girls would go to Lipscomb in Nashville, and they are taught in a one-week course all about how government is set up, when they get there, they are the fifty-first state, and they are put in a fictitious city. They do not, we do not push an ideological view on these young students, and we do not push a political party. They would not go there as Democrats or Republicans, they would go as Johnsonians, Jamesonians, and so forth. They set up the government under the guise of how we have the government set up here. And I have already gotten with Mayor Mason, and he's on board, I've also talked to Mayor Smith, and she's on board, and I've also talked to the other mayors, Mullenax and Gibbs out of Gordonsville, and they all agree that what they would like to do is have a mayor for the day, for these ones that are going to be going, not the ones that have already gone. This way, they can put it in their resume that they were, they have some experience knowing what it's like to be a mayor, because mayors here will all talk to them and explain to them their duties and responsibilities. None of the ones that go there have had any of these types of experience that I know of. I'm not saying that there aren't other counties in this state, but they would be our representatives for Smith County. What I would like to know is, and I don't want, I'm not here asking for money tonight, I don't want money tonight, but I would like to know if it would be possible for the mayor's office to authorize a half-boy and a half-girl. Mayor Mason is doing a half-boy, half-girl for both Smith County High and Gordonsville High School. So, it's a great.
Price per?
The price on those four, a half-boy and a half-girl total would be three seventy-five, instead of seven fifty, because, you know, I know every money, every penny counts when it comes to this stuff, and you folks right here are the purse string holders. This way, I've got it set up right now with Mayor, Smith County Mayor, that it's a done deal, every year, they're going to have that in their budget. If the mayor of Smith County, or the mayor of Carthage, the mayor of South Carthage, and the mayor of Gordonsville all get on board, I think that it could be something where we can send some of these young men and women that are going to be learning this stuff, and, like I said, I don't want the money this year. I would like to do this for fiscal year 2020, because right now, I'm limited on how many I can send. I can go over the cap on boys, and I have to get special permission for the girls. And I went over the cap last year, and I got special permission, so I now know what I need to do in that. And folks, you are looking at a past delegate for Girls State.
You better not tell them that.
No, I'm just saying, it's, it's something where these, these folks will learn about how our government is set up.
It is a great experience, even though it was eons ago, I remember what a great experience it was to go there. Could we possibly look at the literature you've left us, and then get back to you on this?
Yours peruse, I mean, you have.
Okay, and then, then we can make a better informed decision next month.
You have all, all this year, if it's within the budgetary restraints, like I said, I think it would be great, and I'm happy, and I thank you, the mayor, for allowing the young men and women to be able to have a day that they can put in their resume when they go there.
Looking forward to it, I really am, it's going to be fun. And, and again, my experience was a great one, and that was years ago, so I'm sure it's even better today. But we'll, we'll look at this, and, and next month, hopefully have some decision for you, how's that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming, thank you for what you do, appreciate it. Okay, getting close to the end here, the use of museum parking lot for River City Ball, Ms. Alexander?
Yes, last year for River City Ball, Mayor Dennis allowed us to use the museum parking lot and the police parking lot next to day hall for our valet, and we just here to request that we. We're here to request that we are able to do that again. I don't believe there were any issues. We have security on site for the evening and those areas will be lit in addition to what is already.
Was that enough parking?
It was, yes.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, let's see. All right, we have a question from Mr. Baxter Key concerning our water and sewer?
Yes. Let's go back to 1958, 59, when Carthage ended, when you had Eastland Heights. College ended at the football field. Third Avenue ended at the river, at the bridge. Appears before the current Corral Hall Bridge was, and I'm not sure when the current water treatment plant was built.
Process we use now is empty save, yeah, when it was put in.
Okay, it's empty, okay. So, it's newer than I thought it was. Carthage has basically doubled in size since then. We have, we're constantly having water breaks, water main breaks at, such as the one at Hall and Dogwood and such. The pipes having finite life, as do the air and vacuum valves. We should be at the high points on the water lines and air release valves. There should be at low points on bottom lines. Mr. Fisher can probably answer those questions. Okay, I do know that we had some sewage issues last year. Mr. Fisher ran the camera, underside walking, noticing irregularity on college. If he could like collaborate on that further.
There's nothing related, no. You stopped up, no, on your.
On our side, but under the, under the side, but up and down. And you ran your camera all out and looked.
Other than that, we ain't have no, no problems. It's one way or the other, you know.
But these things have a finite due to the slips, the. Y'all have a problem here. The sewer lines are mainly P joint with gaskets. The gaskets do erode and give out after time. The water line is cast out ductile iron, six-inch ductile iron standard. It does fill up with corrosion and sediment over time. I do know of one person that has to turn on their water and run it for a minute or two to let the brown stuff get out of their water. Mr. Chief Hopper. You know, I'm not sure what the inner diameter of the lines are now because I've not seen a sewer line, a water or sewer line replaced in its entirety on E Street in years. And I do know that when we lived on Carmack back in the early 60s, that was when the water and sewer lines were put in there.
Could we maybe ask Mr. Fisher, who's been here?
You don't have to have money, but there's that stuff.
I understand, I understand. We'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
We'll get that thing. You know, these lines have not been replaced in 56 years. They're getting on towards the end of their usefulness and lifespan. This is not a current fix. This is something that has kind of been passed on for administrations for 30-something years. So, not saying, not saying you, but.
If it will help, we are doing a study now of the infiltration problems. And one of the people who has been talking with us the last few, often on the last week, has some ideas that you would like to share with. And we've been looking at possible funding, but it, like Mr. Fisher says, it's going to require.
I know, I know that it's not a magic.
Several million dollars.
Snap your finger and there's 10 to 15 million dollars that magically appears. We do all this.
If I could make a statement too, Mr. Key. One thing that is required, as we discussed earlier, is us going to water treatment training. And what I've spoken with, or just water training in general, what I've spoken with some of the grant writers and getting grants to get some of this stuff fixed, we get higher up on the list if we as a council go. So, what we're doing as a council is we're going and attending this training. And Ms. Scott's already said it, I think there's, so basically four out of seven, we've attended. And so, once we've all attended, we can, we can start looking at those grants to get some of that money in so that we can. Because that was a big thing I've heard from a lot, is issues with water, issues with the.
I sold valves, pipes, fittings, everything from pump stations where it comes in from the river to the sewage stations. I sold supply houses that you would buy from Sutton Sales and other people. 13 and a half years, so I do have a good idea of what I'm talking about. I'm not just.
Oh, no, I'm agreeing with you.
Out here that's just.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Running around.
What I'm saying is we're working on getting those certifications. And that puts us closer to the front line to fix the issues that, that you're saying you're having. And, and other issues other people in the town are saying that they're having. And, I mean, we got, the 40s and 70s was when everything was built. And so, you know, obviously the 40s stuff, that's coming up. I mean, we got to get that, we got to get that done. So, but we, we're all working to get that certification so that way we can get to the front line and get less what he needs and get you all better water. So, but we are definitely working on it.
Because if you look at the streets closely when you drive, you'll see a line in the pavement roughly where the water and sewer lines are. That's where they're seeping.
And where's the, what is this, where does that?
College or any of the other, you'll see just a crack in the pavement. And that's where the, where you're having the water seep out and wash out underneath.
Would you, would you be able to get with, with the mayor and, and then maybe she can get water from out there and look at it?
Mr. Fisher lives next door to me, I can walk out to my backyard and show him exactly where.
We can get, maybe we can get official report exactly on it and then, you know, be able to determine priorities down the road.
You can also see lateral on the streets where it runs from the house to the caps. There are also cracks appearing where it's washing out underneath.
If you, maybe we, maybe it's suggested, maybe we could sit down one day and you can help make a list of what you're talking. And we can take it to the right people to talk about.
Let me know.
I'll reassure you, we are looking at our infiltration problem and trying to see what we can do within our budget.
Infiltration problem, my biggest fear is that somewhere on College, some afternoon, a sinkhole will open and follow the school bus. And the city, the county and the school board will not, not have enough money ever to pay.
We certainly don't want that to happen. So, we'll, we'll talk about this if you, if you, I'll set aside some time.
I'll be glad to talk to the council about it. But that was what I was, that was the main thing I was talking about is, you know, some of these pipes are from the 40s and earlier and such. I know that when, there was one block in Nashville in front of the old Fort Negley where they still had cedar pipe, still embedded cedar pipe. And it would be, we would get calls where they would have brakes in, I need a fitting to cover, I need a front end fitting to cover this. And you have to guess as to what the diameters are.
Well, if you, we can talk about your schedule and we'll pick some time between us to sit down and talk about this. And I'll bring in some other folks and we'll talk about some of the suggestions you have.
That's more than fair, it's just, you know, I know that when we paved Spring Street and we paved Carmack, those would have been the times to dig up the streets. Now, they're going to have to be dug up again.
Yes, we're definitely going to, we're going to have to.
More, and cost more money.
And there is a process that we can do it the right way and save that money you're talking about. So, that's why we're kind of working with the specialists right now to.
And also, we've planned with Mayor Dennis for working on Main Street, the carthage, making it look better and such. I don't know where, what happened to them. If he gave, he said he had somebody that can, they're very rough sketches. He said he could have somebody make them look better. If not, I'd be glad to redraw them for you and such to take the turn line out and put a thinner planer in with an eight-inch curb and green hills.
If we could schedule some time, we'd be delighted to sit down and talk to you. Thank you for, thank you for sharing that.
You know, you know where to find me.
All right, thank you.
Just about everybody, you're on the council.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Sure. Okay, we have one last, I am the responsibility for roadways in our city, county and state, Mr. April.
Just to summarize real quick, I was contacted less about just finding out what, what roads were we responsible for? What roads was the county responsible for? What was the state responsible for? Unless you, you weren't so sure exactly which ones were which.
Everything in the city we're responsible for. Main Street, we're responsible.
As far, meaning the funding wise, like where, where all the funding's, like basically, I've heard. And I'm trying to confirm, so I'm not going off of hearsay and rumors. But I've heard that when they built the bypass, the state took on certain responsibilities for Main Street for a period of time. And I wanted to try to look into.
I think he's saying no.
No, when they built the bypass, the state give us Main Street.
Yeah, it belongs in the city now.
It belongs, it belongs, but they took on, what I heard was there's possible maintenance agreement for extending the area. You're not familiar with that? Okay. Got you. And then, it was basically, my question was.
I might know, there's at the intersection, like at the main intersection by McDonald's, that there, how far the extension goes for our responsibility versus state?
Got you, so it was more, it's an intersection?
Yeah, an intersection and where our responsibility ends versus state.
Okay, okay.
I think that was part of what the agreement was.
Got you.
So, so Main Street is the city.
And we're responsible 100% for paving, anything underneath that. And then, the other thing I was, I was curious about because I, and I've looked at this on a county level, but I haven't looked at a city level. And I know that Mr. Cobol, he can, he can kind of quote exactly the mileage we have that we're responsible for in county. And I would, I think it would be interesting if we could do a study to find out how many miles of roadway we're responsible for. So, that way, we can in the future make informed decisions on what's prioritized, how to budget. And if we have those numbers in front of us when we make those decisions, I'm just trying to get ahead of the, ahead of the curve here so that another council meeting when we're discussing, we know exactly how many miles we got to work with. So, I, I guess I don't know if I need to motion this or we're just ask, ask the, I probably don't need a motion. Just ask that we do a study to find out how many miles we're responsible for.
I think when they raised the gas tax a few years ago, I think they did a study on each city and county that included the mileage.
And it might be.
Because they did a stu, because they did a study on how much each municipality and county would receive from the proceeds of the gas tax.
So, would that be with T-Dot?
So, that would be included with T-Dot.
Yeah, so would you be able to give us that information at the next council meeting?
I can certainly try.
Okay, or just attempt, attempt, just report back. Okay, and that's all had on that, nobody else had anything to add.
So, do we have any additional business anybody wants to discuss? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I have one additional business. This one came up last night. And I just, I'm coming to, I'm coming straight to the city with it because I don't, I'm trying to operate. Was, are we now charging a, the Little League to use the ballparks at the city area?
Not that I know of.
Okay, was told that, so that's why I'm putting rumors, coming straight to people.
They just have to sign a liability contract in case you like.
Okay, but there's no charges, we're not charging. So, is this a liability contract?
Yep.
That was my only question.
Okay, any further additional? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second, all in favor?